Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. The meeting will be starting shortly. While we wait, let's learn more about Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels available on Comcast channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on channel 13 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well. Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. The meeting will be starting shortly. While we wait, let's learn more about Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels available on Comcast channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on channel 13 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area.
I'd like to welcome you to the Exeter Planning Board Meeting of June 8, 2023 at 7:00 PM. I'm Langdon Plummer, the Chair of the Board. It's exciting to see some people here. We usually have a big open house with nobody here, except Henry comes once in a while. So I want to introduce the Board next and ask first for John to begin.
John Bruder.
Gwen English.
Nancy Galantus, Board Representative.
And our clerk.
Pete Cameron Clerk.
Jen Martel.
Okay. We're starting tonight to approve minutes of April 13th, which we tabled to be this meeting to take care of, so they're there in our packet. Floor is open to any comments.
Mr. Chair, I'm wondering, since we have a good crowd here tonight, whether we could dispense with these technical matters and let's table them all until the next meeting because we have some folks here that don't want to spend the whole night listening to us.
I agree.
So I will move that we table all of these.
I will second.
Move to second.
Yeah, are we tabling them to another day?
Well, how about to the end of the agenda if it's not real late?
Yes.
All right, so you want to withdraw your motion. I'll withdraw my second, and we can always make it again if it's late.
All right. I was trying to save time and get these people home and didn't need to listen to all of this.
Chair will delay the minutes by the end of the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Then we'll move right along to application of Elizabeth H. Hewson, revocable trust for a minor subdivision existing 2.3 acre parcel into three residential units, suburb of properties located at 45 Pine Street in the R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District, is tax map parcel 83-59, and planning case number 23-5. And Dave, would you like to start us off, please?
Sure. As you said, the applicant seeking minor subdivision, existing 2.3 acre parcel located at 45 Pine Street into three residential lots. The applicant's proposal creates a 1.2 acre parcel for the existing residence with frontage on Pine Street and two new residential lots, each approximately 24,000 feet in area with frontage on Nelson Drive. The applicant's minor subdivisions plans and supporting documents they have in their bank are enclosed in the packet. There was no technical review, maybe how many of the plans were received by staff with compliance with zoning. And Doug Easton, the code for opposite heads determined the proposal meets all the minimal dimension standards, and there's no way of being requested for this application. However, there was a little wrinkle that came up that when you look at the plan, there is a wetland across on the other side of Nelson Street. And it was from the, you know, we have delineated from a prior one condition use permit across the street from the building. So we don't know if that wetland is contiguous to the Little River. If the wetland is contiguous to the Little River, because the end of that boundary that much Henry is passing out is the Shawton Protection District, which is the orange line, which both lots would be completely immaterial. The setback and the trigger for conditional use for building would be 150 feet. The yellow marker is 100, and then it would be 50 feet. So probably one or both of these lots would need a conditional use permit. And we've talked about this on prior applications, and we had the people come back and subsequently. I mean, you can currently get a CUP and subdivision approval, because if you create an existing lot of record, then you basically approve the conditional use permit without approving it, because if you go back and you deny it, it's my opinion that basically it's as if you took it and you'd be subject to, you know, taking that claim. So we're sympathetic because we don't know if the wetlands are contiguous and so forth. So, and the buffer is impacted, Nelson Street actually is between this, and, you know, it's an existing lawn area where the houses would be proposed. So if the board is a minimal, beyond the standard conditions, I think that it could be solved, I mean, it's pretty straightforward otherwise, and it could be solved with a... Because the applicant is looking to move ahead as soon as possible, and they get a wetland scientist, you know, right out there to determine who we need to see if one is, and if one's needed, then they'll come back and get one. But if one's not, then they can move forward. So if we don't, if the board doesn't act tonight, that will put them off until they go to the conservation permission July 11th. If we don't have a meeting on July 27th, the first meeting in August is CIP. This puts them into the end of August to come back for a simple subdivision. So if the board's okay, I recommend that, you know, beyond the two standard conditions we always give minor subdivisions, the lots on the plan shall be deemed unbuildable until either a conditional use permit is secured or it is determined by the town that one is unnecessary. So it just protects, you know, from having...
Sounds like a plan.
For the planning board, you know, if they commit for a CUP, you have to grant, you know, but if you do this language, you can make your decision. And you know the facts already, it's a road and so forth, and it's on a land, but, I mean, it's on a lot. I think that just protects us. So if the board is comfortable, I would recommend that as a condition of approval. Everyone feels otherwise that the plan meets all the requirements.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, and I just, well, I'll wait for public comment, but we did receive two letters from nearby residences, except for the others, but they're writing to me. And I can read what is directly on the public policy.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, do we need to open the case? Do we need to open?
Yeah, we need to open the case, don't we?
Yeah.
What would you like to make a motion?
Aye, so moved.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Moved in second, voice vote, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Closed, abstentions, the ayes have it. Now, Henry, the floor is yours.
Good evening. It's nice to see you again. For the record, I'm Henry Boyd of Millennium Engineering, and along with me is Jim Hewson and his wife, Elizabeth. Dave did a pretty good job laying this out. I'm sure you've all seen at the corner of Pine Street and Court Street, there's a beautiful home that belongs to Jim and Elizabeth. And they, at one time, this was actually three different parcels of property. There was a large garage structure down here. The former owner, their predecessor, actually had voluntarily merged the lot. So if you were to look at their deed and look at their title source, it would show that it was made up of three different parcels, but it was merged voluntarily by their predecessor. The building was removed. It is a bit odd, and one of the things that I have issues with is actually doing work on other people's property. So it's a little bit difficult, and we're going to have a challenge, but we will find a way to map the wetlands. Dave has been really good in the process. This was brought to my attention this morning about that issue, because when we were out here looking at this, not only is Nelson Drive here, but there's a fairly large building here, which is a condominium development and everything else. Dave was very good with his time this morning. He met me out there, and we did find some old delineation flags, which we were able to get into the drawing, because I wanted to be as open and honest with you as I could be to give you the best information that I could. What you're looking at there would be absolute worst-case scenario, most conservative estimation, because the two wetland delineation flags are still there from a number of years ago, so we were able to map those in. Now, as Dave said, that's the case, the 300-foot edge from the river would be out here if those wetlands are in fact contiguous to the river. It is flat in there, so honestly, that may be the case, but if it is, that is the worst-case scenario. On the 11 by 17 that I gave you, it does show that there's the 100-foot line. So that would be, still, we have a 100-foot setback from that if that is a prime wetland. So what you're looking at actually, as Dave said, the CUP would be in here. So the majority still of those lots under that worst-case scenario are upland area, would meet any setback from wetlands of that. But if it is that way, we understand and would be okay with that condition of the approval. To show you how the lots are laid out, it's pretty straightforward, pretty simple. I know you guys are thoughtful on looking at these applications even before the meeting, but you'll see that there's two very square rectangular lots that would receive their frontage from Nelson Drive, and the magnificent home that's here still would enjoy its driveway access from Pine Street as it does now and has for decades. So it's a pretty simple subdivision, albeit for what we're dealing with down here. And as I said, I don't think we'd have a problem with the condition that the planner has recommended.
Thank you.
Question?
Question?
Yes, sir. Before the lots were merged, lot two and three looked like what? Just like this?
No, they did not look like this. So I can't remember exactly what the exact lot configuration was, but it didn't look like this. So under any circumstance, they've lost any grandfathered status that they would have.
Okay, and you were just waving your hand across lot three with a wetland setback, but you went about halfway up the lot. You mean it to be this, what you just gave us, right?
Well, what I was referring to, John, is that if you look at the 100-foot setback, the jurisdictional requirement for the CUP is 150 feet, so it would be an additional 50 feet between that. So if this is the 300, it would be about here.
So that leaves about a quarter of an acre for the house.
Yeah, that leaves substantial room in there for the home.
Long driveway.
And as I say, that is the worst-case scenario. It could be that that wetland line, the contiguous line from the river, is further to the south, and if that's the case, I still think we would be in the 300-foot setback, the river buffer, but it may be way down here and outside of the requirement for the 150 CUP.
These two lots have town watering saw?
They will.
Any other court questions?
Both lots have driveways coming off of Nelson Drive. In either scenario, whatever happens, both of them.
That's correct, Gwen.
Any other questions? And I'll open up...
Can you tell me, as I look at this site plan, just to the left, what that is? It looks like a big parking lot. I didn't have a chance to drive by.
That's for the church.
Church, right?
Yeah, in fact, the access in the parking lot for the Church of Christ is over there.
Okay, all right. Right here.
Yeah. Anybody else? All right, somebody open to the public, if there's anyone in that row that would like to speak regarding this case. I'd ask you please to step to the microphone, and Henry has the microphone, okay?
I do.
Mr. Chair. And introduce yourself so that our viewers at home can know who is speaking as well as us. Anybody like to speak to this case? Seeing none, then I'll close the public session.
I do want to...
Excuse me, yes, okay.
We should read the letter.
Yeah, read the letter. I meant to do that.
Dear Mr. Planning, Dear Plumber and Planning Board Members, As writing with reference to the application of Elizabeth A. Hewson, revocable trust for a minor subdivision of an existing 2.38 acre parcel to three residential lots, tax map parcel number 83-59, PDK number 23-5. Firstly, I was very disappointed to learn of this proposed development from a neighbor and not from your committee directly. Unfortunately, we will be away at the time of your meeting on 6/8/23, so we will be unable to attend. Therefore, I am submitting my concerns in writing for your consideration. When we purchased 96 Court Street in 2003, and we selected this house because we did not want to live in a subdivision, looking at the proposed lot and lot size of 24,000 four square feet, it would appear that if this application is approved, we will be gazing at possibly two duplexes for a total of four houses for our bedroom and downstairs windows. I feel that this would result in a decrease of our property value and not a good aesthetic for our neighborhood. The first picture on the following page is a view from our front bedroom obscured by leaves. The second view is taken from our front garden path, showing the view from the two downstairs rooms. I would hope the planning board would insist on the preservation of the trees along the property line on the Court Street side, especially the deciduous tree on the corner of Nelson Drive and Court Street. Preservation of Court Street tree line is a system mitigating damage that this proposed development would do to the aesthetic of Court Street. My other concern is one of drainage. Ever since the bridge work was completed on the Little River, we have a pronounced increase in flooding in our cellar during periods of heavy rain, which we have addressed with both the town engineer and town manager to no avail. Water skips the rain, the drain. Water skips the drain from above Chadwick Road and runs down the road and the swale outside our property and into our front garden and cellar. Water also floods into our gardens from 94 Court Street as we appear to be at the lowest point. At times, water also crosses Court Street from Nelson Drive onto our side of the road. I would like to be assured that the drainage will be addressed in any approval of planning applications enlisted. Oh, continues. Thank you for reading my concerns. I expect to be kept informed of any further developments related to this application by your committee, either by post or email at alex1975@gmail.com. Sincerely, Angela J. Leonard. And there's two pictures, and you all have this, correct?
Yes.
First photo, that's second. Dear Board Members, I was shocked to discover that the property across the street, tax map 89-59, is in the process of being subdivided into parcels, which could lead to a pair of duplex houses in place of the shady lawn that is there now. My fear is that this will have a negative impact on our property value, and will certainly do permanent damage to the attractiveness of our neighborhood. It would be far better if the subdivision could be prevented, but if it has to be approved, it is my fervent hope that the trees along the Court Street side of the property can be preserved. The old hardwoods at the corner of Nelson Drive and Court Street is exceptionally important. These trees keep this part of Exeter attractive and will screen any new houses from the traffic along Court Street. I urge you to do all these candidates reserve. I am sorry that I will be away on the 8th and will not be able to attend the meeting, but this will be considered. I hope this letter conveys the intensity of my concern about this matter. Thank you. Yours sincerely, David P. Leonard.
Question?
Yes, John.
So neither of these folks are direct abutters, so they didn't get the notice?
I don't know about...
They live across the street and down.
I think they both, I think they both live at the same address.
Yes.
And they would be down here, so technically, they're not...
They wouldn't have been acquired directly.
Not by, or directly across the street.
Yeah, we even go to the extent of locating people diagonally just to make sure, so they're beyond that. I believe that they're here. Here's 94 Court Street, so they're down here.
From the picture from their view, I mean, they are a little bit down. I don't know how far the property line is.
I mean, they're beautiful trees. I would agree with them in that.
Well, they're all along the edge of the property.
Right, that's good. Are the zoning allowed duplexes there?
The zoning does. If it's 24,000 foot deep, a single family or duplex.
Just happened to be 24,004. Good work.
Good question. All right, let me close the public session at this point and come back to the board. Any other questions or thoughts, concerns? I'll discuss David's thoughts in terms of... I mean, I agree with the concern about the trees. I think that's going to be the decision of the developer or the person who purchases the lot and decides, but knowing the property, those trees are pretty much around the outside because previous owner had developed a sort of an arboretum in that property. So it's, well, yeah, it's fairly open.
May I ask a question, Henry? You can help, because I went out there. I mean, it looks like the lot line is pretty close to the edge of pavement, and it comes out to the edge of pavement on Nelson Drive?
Yeah, Nelson Drive and that southeasterly corner of the parcel are basically coincident, right?
So most of those trees, if not all of them, are on this parcel?
Absolutely, and it's very close to the Court Street side as well of the pavement, but they've done, the place is just beautiful. I don't know how other to describe it, and I honestly would think that anybody would buy this lot, would have plenty of room to work within here without having to harm those large trees. There's an existing metal fence that actually sets on the building setback. So a lot of the property that you would imagine is the town right of way is actually on the private property. So I think that they can do a lot to preserve what they have out there. And I know this is probably beyond what you want to hear, but almost every residential development that we do right now, drainage is an issue, and in every circumstance, we generally will employ stone drainage strips to receive the roof runoff and do everything that we can to eliminate runoff into the right of way from the driveway. So we're sensitive to those abutters' concerns, and this will be done responsibly.
How do you, can you explain how you do that? Like, I'm looking particularly at lot three, where the driveway would be going, you know, coming down off the hill onto Nelson.
Sure.
How would you, just, you know, spitballing, how would you prevent rain from kind of pouring into the street?
So from the roof is really easy to do, because at the drip lines, you can employ gutters, which we do, but we'll have overflow spouts in those things and direct them into stone strips and reservoirs. In the driveway, depending on how wide it is, we can either crown it and pitch it to either side so that immediately the water is running to each side, and we'd employ those strips as well, those drainage strips. And if the people are interested, we could do some pervious paver technology on portions of it, but our goal is not to introduce more water into the right of... But our goal is not to introduce more water into the right-of-way if we can. So we'd be probably shaping the driveway to one side with no crown, but it could be done either way and with the same simple technology of employing impervious drainage strips.
Question for Dave.
Dave?
If you're all done, Jen.
Yes, I am. Thank you.
What do you know about, they referenced talking to the town about the drainage issues? Can you tell us what, if anything?
I wasn't involved in any of those conversations. That's more, he said they were talking to the town. I was never brought in any of that, I don't know.
So we don't know whether they agreed to do something or...
I have no idea.
Has there been any discussion with the condo association across Nelson Drive?
No. No. It's kind of amazing when you go out there, you'll see if you drive in. I'm sure you've seen it, Jen, but that building is substantially large. So when you look at this, you, it's kind of amazing that we still have to go through this process, which we obviously will. But this is pretty well-developed through the front corner here, so...
Come on. There are catch basins on the street. There is street drainage.
There isn't any drainage that we were able to see up on here. There is one at the very corner of the street, John, but we haven't looked at it for how it functions or what it's to do. The road does run down, as the abutter did say. So we start at Pine Street at elevation 42, and by the time we get down to here, it's 10 feet vertically separated. So that water, and a lot of that, there is a lot of pavement on Court Street. So you have a crown, so it's shifting down. So a lot of that water is coming from the town road. There's nothing that we can do about that. But we always make sure that we're not making it worse. And that's our charge. I mean, we can't fix, obviously, what's happening in Court Street, but I think we can fairly reasonably design it in such a way, those houses, that we're not making that situation worse for anybody.
And it looks like we have a little elevation drop on Nelson, right?
Yeah, so I, I've chosen to add one-foot topography on here because in the areas that it's flatter, so it actually drops... There's an odd situation where you have a low spot. It pitches back this way. So it's high where the church is. So from where you are pulling into the church parking lot, hopefully you're going Sunday, we go from 35 feet to 32 and then less at the catch basin. So there's a little bit more than a three-foot change from the church back. So everything does drain essentially from the church this way and Pine Street this way. So there's, I can imagine when there's a lot of water coming there, that it does get into this catch basin and then obviously out to the river somehow.
Thanks.
Jen, I mean, Pete, you got any?
No, it seemed more than relatively straightforward. I have to admit that the Lennox that I'm going to assume they're maybe husband and wife or brother and sister.
No, they're husband.
It's, they're troubled, and I think they have a right to be troubled, but unfortunately, progress must go on. And that is pretty in that area. But that's about as far as I think we can rationally go to preserve as much as we can and as much as you've indicated will be done. That helps me with what the Lennox is concerned, excuse me, concerned about.
Nancy?
No, I'm in the same area as Pete on this.
Well, would you like to hear Dave's suggested conditions?
Concerned with...
One area redoubted again, just the two standard conditions for all minor site plans, I mean, minor subdivisions, which are: Number one, DWD file, like the plan shall be provided to the town planner for all property lines and renovation prior to signing the final plan. This plan must be an NAD 1983, state planning answer, 28, chief ordinance. Two, all renovation shall be set according to section 9.25, the site plan review and subdivision regulations prior to signing the final plan. And three, the lots on the plan shall be unbuildable until either a conditional use permit is secured or is determined by the town that one is unnecessary.
May I have that again, Dave, please? That last one again.
The lots on the plan shall be unbuildable until either a conditional use permit is secured or is determined by the town that one is unnecessary.
Okay, all right. I'm troubled with determined by the town, but I think that for that purpose of this...
Double the determination.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I thought there was a exception for...
Yeah, I agree.
I guess.
Someone like to make a motion?
I will.
Nancy?
Sure. I move at the request of Elizabeth A. Houston, Voluble Trust, Planning Board Case Number 23-5, for minor subdivision approval be approved with the conditions as stated by our town planner.
Second.
Thank you, John. We'll do this with a hand vote, please. So those in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed, abstentions? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. All set. Can you say again, Henry? You know what happened dinner tonight? You know what happened dinner tonight? You're welcome. Thank you for coming. Okay, the next case is the application of Blind Tiger LLC for a site plan review for the proposed reconstruction of the clubhouse in addition to parking at the Exeter Country Club. Subdivided properties located 58 JD Hill Avenue in the R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District, tax map number 51-1. And this is planning board case number 23-2. And Dave, I'd ask you if it's ready to be heard?
It's a lot.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Somebody like to make a motion that we hear the case?
Uh, smooth.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Pete, thank you. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any ayes or abstentions? Carries, okay. All right. Dave, would you like to start us with this, please?
Uh, yeah. The office submitted site plan review application, plans, supporting documents in January 24, 2023. Those are enclosed. A technical review committee meeting was conducted on February 16, earlier this year. And at this meeting, it was, there were numerous comments by all the members. It was the greenest that was outside the parcel on the right-of-way. So really, we had a lot of comments, which resulted in a pretty significant plan change. So we determined that a second TRC would be necessary prior to the office presenting to the planning board. I provided those comment letters for your review as well. Revised plans, supporting documents were received on April 28. And then a second TRC meeting was scheduled and held on May 11. A second UEI comment letter dated May 12 was provided and is also enclosed for your review. And there were no further key arguments about the subdivision plan that addressed all of the numerous concerns outlined in the first letter. So it was, we felt that it came back to the plan and addressed all of the concerns. The applicant is requesting several waivers from board site plan and subdivision regulations in conjunction with the application and our online enclosed waiver request letter from Manual Engineering dated April 25, 2023. And in the event the board chooses to hold the sidewalk, we would ask you to mark up the important features of the site if you want to forego the sidewalk. I did have, you know, some standard conditions in the support of the site that we've seen. And that's all I have. Oh, and then I did receive, one more thing. I did receive an email today, earlier today. And I'll read into the public record and the public's room. And I gave you the copy. It wasn't in the package because I got it today, 29.
Thank you. Bruce, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the members of the board and members of the public. My name is Bruce Skaman, here from Manual Engineering and James Varon Associates. And we are here representing Blind Tiger, which is proposing to put a new restaurant at the Exeter Country Club. For those of you that aren't familiar, Exeter Country Club's kind of at the corner of Jade Hill and Webster Ave or behind Hayes Park. So the Squambskut River follows around the back. Currently, there's a large parking area and a building at the top of the hill next to the First Tee and the Ninth Green. This is the proposed restaurant that they are proposing to put in that hopefully is more of a colonial structure. Currently, the buildings that are out there have been several additions over the years since, I believe, it started the country club in 1889. The project is going to demolish completely and raise the existing building and replace it with the restaurant. It's going to be 68 by 94 feet. The parking lot that exists is from, basically, from here towards the road. We're proposing to add some additional parking. There's going to be some slight changes in the parking along this edge to make the square up and make all the parking spaces in this parking lot to current standards. We've worked with the technical review committee in the town. We have drainage structures at the top of the hill catching any of the water that's coming from this direction down towards the property line. We collect all that water. We keep it in closed pipes and put it back into the pond that's along the ninth fairway. The restaurant, we've put in enough parking for both the restaurant and the golf course. We are proposing a new trash facilities that are up on the hill in the wooded area that is beyond the parking lot. Currently, the trash is in the parking lot down here, which you can see from JD Hill. There's a series of improvements, like I said, with drainage and the parking. But I guess at this point, we don't have a lot more to present other than there's going to be a restaurant on the second floor. There'll be an outdoor dining on a deck in front overlooking the First and Ninth Fairways. And we'll open it up to questions at this point.
Yeah, aren't there also going to be a club shop or something else down?
Yeah, inside the building, there's going to be the existing. Club shop is going to be replaced in this same building. Yeah, on the first floor. This whole side of the building is going to be exposed two stories, as you can see from here.
Okay, yep.
So overlooking the First Tee now is going to be the club shop and the pro shop where you go in to check in for going out on the golf course. So that will all operate out of here. The main door for the restaurant is going to be halfway down the building, and it's going to have an elevator going up to the second floor.
Can you describe to the board the changes that are going to be made at the access?
Absolutely. Let me get the existing...
Right now, it's a, I don't know how many people per pad, over 100 foot, wide, urban, with no kind of sense of where you go.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Thank you.
So this is the existing condition plan that we had. Currently, from just away from the property line to here, which is about, I would say that it's about 90 feet, plus or minus, is all open. So it's a, I don't want to call it a free-for-all, but we've all been in and out of that. Okay. So what we want to do is improve that. So we are putting in islands and minimizing that where you can exit that parking area. So we're putting in a large island here with a single driveway here for this, this parking spots that are along the property line. And we narrowed this down so that traffic can either go around this way or either direction. We've looked at fire trucks. The fire department has reviewed this. It is safe for fire apparatus. We also have worked with DPW because of drainage along JD Hill. The peak of the road is about at the property line. And right now, water will flow this direction and then flow down Webster. So what we've done is we've added so that the water can flow from the edge of JD Hill into our island, go into the catch basin system, and be directed further down into our ponds. So the drainage has been improving the town infrastructure as well as our own. Additionally, for off-site improvements, we are going to put in a sidewalk that connects down to JD Hill where the sidewalk currently ends. So in the town right-of-way, there will be an added sidewalk put in as part of this project. So we have two off-site improvements for JD Hill Road, JD Hill Ave. I'm sorry.
Will the additional parking up there, up top, be in a fairly level situation? Because the current parking lot is killing.
Correct. So there isn't much we can do with the existing parking. This is all, these are the contours. So you have a two-foot drop over about 60 to 70 feet. So it's all in the four, about 4% range, where some of this is in the 10 to 12% range. We try to design things for 5% or less in a parking lot. And that's why, you know, at 4%, we're approximately as much better.
Can you walk us through the stormwater management? I see there's a big...
Absolutely.
...transition area there.
So first of all, in front of the building, towards the greens, we're putting in a stone bed so that all the water that comes off this direction isn't going to circle back around, run across the grass. We're going to infiltrate water here, coming off that direction. Over here, if you see the contours, everything's directed in this direction. And that gets into this large ponding area. Over here, anything that comes down, there's a swale here. So if it bypasses this for any reason, it's going to get into the swale. So we're not going to take any water and push it towards the Hayes Park. At the bottom, we have a catch basin here that has a pipe that goes to the next island, which gets another dry well, actually. So we have a stone area. So all the water that goes into this island is going to drop into the dry well. So there's a bigger, it's almost like a pond that's full of stone. So it gives a lot more area than just into a catch basin top. So this whole island is going to be a big sponge sucking up the water. So we had to ask special permission from DPW to have the water come in and put rock here because it's in the town right-of-way. The town engineer said that he preferred this because we are taking more of that water off JD Hill and pulling it in. So this whole area collects water. This is all existing. So we're really not doing anything there. There's already a tree line here. And this water, we assume, gets... And this water, we assume, goes in this direction. I think that is slightly burned in places. And the water ends up going back towards the driving range and out down the dirt road in that direction. But this whole area is what we're trying to collect into this catch basin dry well area with the contours that are flowing the water there. From there, we have a pipe that directs it out. And this is our piping system. So we're investing in a large pipe, I think it's about 70 feet pipe, to take it out at the rear, the middle of the ninth fairway.
But that pond exists now?
It exists now. And it's a man-made pond. And they use it for sprinkling the golf course. Currently, they have a well that runs, I believe, almost 24 hours a day, putting water into that pond. So what we're hoping is that we can take the water, maybe use less energy in pumping water into the pond by using rainwater and reusing it. There's no outlets to that pond. I've walked around the pond. There's a berm all the way around it. The only outlet is the pump house. It sits right about here. They pump it out onto the fairways for irrigation.
Okay, so it does not get into the river?
Correct.
At any point?
Correct.
From that pond?
From that pond.
That's not to say that there aren't other areas.
Correct. I'm just saying this pond doesn't have an outlet. Because that was why I went out and walked, just to confirm that, because that was what we've always been told. But you can definitely see the man-made berm around the backside when you walk it. And we had our wetland scientists confirm that also.
At what point at the dry well, or what levels, does the water start flowing toward the pond? Is the dry well filled and then it's?
I can tell you.
Probably illustrated in.
Elevation. So the elevation at the top of the dry well is around 64.1, 64. And that outlet is at PD5. Sorry. So the outlet is at 60.35. So it's four feet below the grade. So it's significant, you know, there's a lot of head that can be built up on that to push water out of that.
Questions, other questions? Glenn?
Um, I think I'll, well, there's a lot to think about. I think I'll wait until.
Okay, Nancy?
I'm fine for right now.
Okay. Jen?
I have another question. Just because I'm not seeing it in the plans, are there, is there going to be tree cutting as part of this project?
Absolutely. So the existing conditions.
Back to page one.
Back to page one, like existing conditions. So right now, there's a large area for golf carts and storage of equipment right here. So there's a tree line around that. The proposed tree line is back in here. So.
Yeah, it kind of does like that V.
Yeah, so we have, see all the new contours? That's all cut. We went back, because I came to a couple of meetings a few months ago, and we located all the larger trees because we knew that that was something that the board did look at. So there's a series of larger trees that will be cut. It is 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, I believe 11 of the larger trees in that wooded area will be cut as part of this project. I believe those are the ones, what is it, over?
20.
20 inches? They're all over 20 inches.
Yeah, it'd be good to just see that on the plans because I feel like there's like a symbol for existing trees, but then it's not clear. The exist, in the proposed plans.
Do you want us to just, as we can show which trees are going to be cut?
Yeah.
Just call them out?
It's nice to see the existing tree line and then the proposed tree line on the same plan, at least for my benefit, just to see kind of what the.
So you're asking us to put the tree line on the proposed conditions?
Yeah, like, you know, sometimes you have like existing stuff kind of faded in the background.
There's going to be a different scenario with respect to lighting, I think. Will there not be? This is a restaurant. Restaurant hours are going to be a little longer than had been the existing, I'll call it a lunch area. So that there will be, there will be.
We have a lighting plan? Would you like to go through the lighting?
I'd like to go through the lighting plan, please. Because that does have some potential impact upon the neighborhood.
So lighting, we have, on the utilities plan, C4A, has those light fixtures shown on the plan here. So there's one here, 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 and here. And then here and here. There will be some lights on the building itself. There's some wall sconces around the building that will also be lit. They're all LED, down-facing, dark sky compliant fixtures.
So there will be an increase in the number of lights?
Absolutely.
Okay. No idea what the visibility is from the neighbors across the road. And I have no idea what it is with the neighbors across the road because it sits up on the hill.
Did, do we ask how many lights are there now?
They're on the utility poles? They're up on the top of the utility poles.
No, no, how many? How many lights are there now?
We are, just to finish the conversation first one, we do have a plan by electrical exposure lighting. Has prepared a light intensity plan showing the lighting and showing it at the property line of approximately zero or meeting the town regulations. So that, we have done an analysis of that. Going back to the next question, the existing lighting was. So I think there's lighting on this pole. I believe there might be a light on the pole up by the green. Is that up by the putting green? Yep. But I think those are the two places, if I'm not mistaken, that there is lights currently.
So the parking lot's not lit at all?
It is not.
Okay.
So how late will the restaurant be open now versus, a new restaurant be open versus what is open now?
Let me see.
We know that.
Does anybody from the group have hours? I'm sorry.
We haven't set hours yet, exactly.
You know what they are now?
Right now, I mean, right now, the club closes. People leave up there sometimes as late as 9:30, even though they play golf and it's dark at 8:30 to 45. But we haven't set exact restaurant hours yet.
But you're going from two lights to 11 lights?
Correct. I would tell you that the existing parking lot doesn't meet town regulations for safety. And that you have to bring it, when you touch the parking lot, that we need to bring it up to current standards so that the parking lot is lit. When someone parks on this corner and there's only a light, you know, 200 feet away, it's, you know, and you're at the edge of a wooded area, that's not really up to current standards for lighting.
So they're dark night compliant and all that? And they directed away from the houses across?
Correct. They're all LED directional lighting.
That way.
And that's infected also. I mean, so this isn't just what we approve here. The town of Exeter, and Dave, Mr. Sharples, if, tell me if I'm wrong, you do have inspection process for the installation of these lights? Because I know the other projects I've done in Exeter in years past, you have an inspector that goes out and inspects site plans after they're developed.
Oh, yeah, to me, to make sure they're what you propose.
Correct.
Yes, I mean, and dark sky compliant.
Dark sky compliant, so.
But I'm not aware of any requirements that we have, that the town has to have parking lot lights.
I just think it's a standard for engineers when you're putting lighting in for safety. I'm not, I didn't say.
I thought you said the town requirements.
Well, I'm sorry. I'm just, it's a safety requirement is what we would traditionally do, to have a minimum lighting in a parking lot. Because when people go out at night, you know, in the evening, if you're in the restaurant, you have a late dinner at 8 o'clock and you come out at 10 o'clock and you want to walk to the parking lot, it's appropriate to be lit.
Hand out flashlights?
Without hours determined, yeah. Once after 10:00 PM, our regs do require that they're either shut off or reduced in intensity. So they got to be on some timer to go so they don't stay on bright all night. Ideally off, but when you close.
We'll add, we'll add a note to the site plan requiring that.
So that's set at 10 o'clock, Dave?
10 o'clock, either reduce in intensity if you're open. But if you're closed, then shut off.
Shut off, but maybe one or two right by the.
Well, maybe security lights on the building. But all the parking lot lights need to go reduce in intensity or be shut off, according to our regulations. That's what we require.
You didn't require 11 lights, so that was just their engineering.
The lighting is up to them to propose. And I mean, we don't have any standards on that. Like, we don't require lighting. If they didn't want lighting, we don't say you have to have.
Well, we'd like to have it be safe.
Exactly. But I'm saying our regulations don't say you need a light for every five parking or anything like that.
Was the parking, were the parking spaces determined based on your calculations? Or, I mean, this is a restaurant. We don't have, this is the first time we've dealt with a golf course. So I'm just wondering how you came up with a number of parking spaces.
So when the group that is interested in doing the restaurant met with the country club, they talked about the requirements they need as the country club. And then we took and added the restaurant parking. Currently, if you have the existing conditions, people have told us, you know, there's parking up and down the road at large events and things. So we're trying to put enough parking up here so that those don't, that isn't going to happen in the future. You know, but I can't say that it will never happen. That's.
Never say never.
Never say never. But we have 120 parking spots that we are, we believe, because the restaurant in the evening, when they're going to be open for dinner, where your highest impact time in a restaurant, the golf course is going to already be closed. So we're hoping that that overlap, that we've found a good balance for that. Now, the restaurant at 9:00 AM on a Saturday morning, when the golf course probably has the most people on it, isn't going to be the busiest time at a restaurant. You know, I'm hoping that they have a great brunch or breakfast and there'll be people in there. But it's not the same as evening dining customers. So that's that balance that we've tried to play. We worked with the Technical Review Committee on that. And we discussed the parking. And we think that we've found the right number.
Do you see this as a venue for events? Is that something, no?
It's always been a venue for golf courses.
There's, and I'll speak this.
Could you use the microphone, please?
Interesting.
Hi, Gary Warren, I'm Exeter resident.
And then I'm part of the partnership for this project as well as Exeter Country Club member. Our mission is not to host weddings here or large events. Do we think it might be a nice place for, you know, people to hold a small meeting or Exeter Hospital to come over and be able to hold a meeting or anything like that? Yes. But our business model is not to be hosting large events. It is to be able to cater to some of the course events that they already have and give them a better venue to do events that they already hold up there and have it be a little more enjoyable by all the members. But it's not, we're not looking to be a major venue in events.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Can I follow up on something? So how many parking spaces do you have right now?
120, I believe it is.
No, that's currently.
Current, okay. Let me pull up that.
So while you're looking for that number, my question is this, just for the impact of the neighborhood. If you're going to 120, you're not going to put no parking on the dirt road, so people are still going to be able to park there, correct? If, as old road? Right now, he's saying that the parking you have now, if there's no parking, people park down on that road, that dirt road.
I get 65.
Thank you. So we're going to almost double for your parking spots. Plus, you're still going to have parking overflow, if you will, down that dirt road. You're not going to put signs up that say nobody can park there, right?
No, but it's not ours.
So we're, so we're kind of almost looking at doubling the ability for cars in the neighborhood. The impact in the neighborhood is where I was going with this. So, thank you.
But in theory, if they have more parking on site, there won't, there won't be need to park on the highway.
On the dirt road, but this is not going to prevent it. What I'm thinking is they're still going to be able to if more people want to be there. Do you see where, what I'm saying? Okay. And your restaurant really could be full on a Saturday morning because people are waiting for tea time.
There's 65.
In theory.
Oh, there's 65 parking spaces currently on the existing conditions plan.
And they're doubling it.
And they're going to 120. So they're adding 55.
Right. So if people, your restaurant's full on a Saturday while people are waiting? You're going to have both golfers and restaurant people if you're.
Absolutely. No, throughout the day, there'll be people in both. We're not closing the restaurant during the day when the golf is open. But right now, they're operating with 65 spaces for the golf course. And we're adding 55. So 55 more parking spaces is significant for a restaurant, I would think, during the hours of the, during the day. And that's what we.
Terrifying, thank you.
I'm sure that a high percent of the restaurant business is the golfers.
Correct. Yeah, it's going to keep them here longer during the day.
I mean, the deck on Friday night might be busy with people who haven't played golf.
Correct.
And the restaurant's going to be open to the public, not just the numbers of the club? Thank you.
Yes.
You've been to Dairyville Country Club in Manchester?
Yes. I don't dance like I did back in the 90s, but. So definitely, I mean, they're hoping to have people that might be meeting friends that were out golfing and come in after work and spend some time in the restaurant. I mean, that's, it's a big investment to tear the building down and put a new restaurant in here. So we, the goal is to have more people come than currently are coming. But it also gives a better service with, you know, hopefully a full menu to the people that do come there versus what's currently offered is a very small menu for the restaurant.
I'm just thinking of the impact on the neighborhood.
Absolutely.
Residential, one way in, one way out, in that, at least in that area. So, yeah. I'm concerned.
Now, how much additional impervious area will there be with these additional parking spaces?
I did not come with that number off the top of my head.
And having considered the course factor.
If you're surrounded by 70 acres of grass. You're on a golf course, it's not a big an issue.
Well, there'll be additional pond, potential ponding, and when we have more rain, then that is, before had been kind of a sponge, but now.
So, we have the number of impervious area.
Couldn't see it.
Is, is 59,000 square feet, which is 98.13% open space, but this lot is very large, and so it's hard to do an exact number on that. Now, let me go back and see if I have that on the existing conditions, which I can't imagine we did that number.
Well, if you're doubling it, it's going to be double the number.
It's about that.
Yes.
It's in that ballpark. So it's, it's probably in the 30,000 square feet range, because if the proposed is 59,000, I'm just guessing, it's in the, around 30,000 square feet of new impervious, and that's just, without doing a mathematical calculation.
Another back bar.
Yes, exactly. It's about three quarters of an acre.
How about any landscaping plans you have?
So our landscaping. There is a landscaping plan, I mean, if we think about it, 98% of this is green space on this whole lot, so there is, and they specialize in growing things on this lot.
Grass.
The grass. We are proposing in the current island, to redo this whole island that's going up. Currently, there's just a series of, I think it's some arborvitals run up there, maybe there's a half dozen of them.
It's mulch.
There's no, there's no, there's no, okay.
It's mulch.
I thought there was a few trees along here, but bushes. We're proposing to put bushes along the front of the building here. We're proposing the hedge road that's here, so as you look in for the road, you have a hedge road here, and then completely redo the island is what we propose for landscaping.
So the other green spaces that are shown on the plans that are getting regraded, how are those going to be treated?
There's existing tree lines there?
No, the, the new, anywhere that you're.
The bio retention pond?
Regrading, bio retention pond.
This is all going to be grass, because we're proposing grass in that.
Like lawn, like mown grass, or like wilds?
Right now, it's just mowed grass.
Okay, and then like that, like that little island that comes out from the south?
This one?
The parking lot islands, yeah, yeah.
This is existing, yeah, this is existing, there's going to be a swale down here, we're adding a retaining wall here, so that'll help, there's a berm that exists there, so we're adding this retaining wall so that as cars pull in, even though they're at a much higher elevation than the grades below, those headlights won't go over to any of the residents. I believe the first residents are about here, so up here, there is no residence, and there's a existing berm that's already here that's wooded, and we're not planning to touch that part of it. Right along the edge here, we're putting a small swale, but other than that, we don't plan to, to do anything other than keep that as a swale along that edge.
What about the area, like you have a big retaining wall at the, I guess it's planned west of the parking lot?
Because of grading.
Yeah, that's helpful.
So you can see this.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
So this is the new tree line.
Yeah.
Currently, there's some bushes that are, that have grown into the parking lot area. We are adding a little bit of parking, I think it's about a triangle, and then we're removing paving from down at this lowest, lowest portion.
And that's just going to be grass?
And so, yeah, so we're cutting that back right in there for the pavement, putting it into the grass for the swale. This, we had to add just a little bit of paving to get this width, so that you could have standard sized spots. Currently, there's three rows of spots there, they're all substandard, so we're bringing that parking lot, originally, when we, when we came to the technical review committee, that was one of the things that the committee had asked us to do, because this was all substandard, we were trying not to touch it at all, because it's existing situation. They asked us to go back and relook at this parking lot and make, improve that, so that's what we did, and we adding this retaining wall, it's just a short wall here, that, like I said, we're digging into this berm a little bit to add this triangle right here of, of pavement, so that we could have three rows of parking. This area is being maintained as lawn because of the treatment that it will bring for the bioswale. This area is a new slope coming down from it, we plan to just keep that as lawn, and this is all three to one, there's two retaining walls here, so we were planning to keep it as lawn also.
So you're going to get a mower in between those retaining walls and mow that slip there?
Yeah, it's, it's three to one, so it's not.
Um.
This is, this wall in places, is, well, right here is 15 feet tall, so when you're up on top of this, you're not even going to see the parking lot. So to add bushes up in here, from the parking, parking lot perspective, you're already looking up, I mean, 15 feet is higher than the ceiling, you're not going to see what's going on above it. There's a large cut, to make this into a 4% parking lot, this is a major undertaking to put this wall in, and that's why we were planning to keep it mowed. The problem with any, you put any trees or something on that, if they start to overturn, then you have issues with your wall and the safety of the wall, so we were trying to keep it grass and keep minimal vegetation in there, just so that we don't have any of those root systems. We could do, you know, like a low growing juniper maybe, that would, so they'd never have to mow it, but that's not going to be anything that's vegetated, you're not doing it for a landscaping purpose, I don't think it's going to be any nicer looking than grass would be.
Did you guys look at all at like terracing that wall or anything, because I mean, a 15 foot retaining wall?
We did, that's why we have the second, we have the second wall, because we already, we are terracing it, and originally, this was one wall right up here, we had a single wall, and this is what we did to try to terrace that.
So how big is the second wall?
The second wall is about two to, two to, two and a half feet in places, so it's not, up here, we have people, golf members, this is the practice green, so we didn't want a tall wall right there. We, we wanted to have this as, if they came over, they're not falling off something large or needing a fence, they're going to be fenced in on that, on that putting green, so we're trying to keep this as, as minor as possible, in the sense of, when you're up here practicing on their existing putting area, then that's, you know, it's not going to be intrusive with a fence there.
I think, I mean, from my standpoint, the applicant wants to cut down 11 mature trees from the forest, I, they're replacing, they're planting, there's, the island landscaping and the landscaping along the building is nice, and you need that in a restaurant, but there's only two real shade trees being proposed. I would like to see at least a replacement, one to one, I mean, we're not asking to put in a 20 inch tree, but, you know, one nice three and a half inch canopy tree for each 20 inch tree that's being cut down, I think is reasonable, and there's, seems like plenty of opportunity to plant trees on this plan, in the parking lot islands, you know, the islands that are just green right now, that are, have no planting in them except for grass, that, even that grass swale along the edge, you could put some trees in there, there's, there seems to be a lot of opportunity.
Well, along here, we didn't want, because of, you know, then you're going to impede water flow. The golf course in general maintains thousands of trees, and it's, it's not as if this site isn't vegetated with a lot of large trees, so that would be my thoughts on, on the trees.
It's, I think that you're trying to get at, and that, we're taking down, I forget the actual number that you mentioned, 12 or 14, of significant sized trees, and I'm, I'm trying to envision where exactly that, hell, I haven't been out to the club for, because I don't play golf anymore.
Sure.
But I'm trying to, and I've played out there a number of times, I do recall there's some really beautiful trees that somehow are going to be removed here as part of this process, and I really want the rest of the board to understand, maybe we all haven't been out there, but I do remember in yesteryear, some of those.
Well, let's go back to the aerial.
It's what you handed, it's what you handed out, this aerial here.
So this is the area, right in here.
Okay.
So, the new parking lot goes to about here.
Yeah, okay, and those are the trees.
So right in here is where the trees are going to be cut down, these are all part of the golf course.
Yeah, understood, it's just those on where the new parking is going to be.
Correct.
That you see that, or you, yes?
I agree, where, where the new parking is and the slopes going down from it, or where the new tree, the trees are going to.
Okay, I'm just trying to envision.
Sure.
How about looking at, I'm looking at C2, there's some little thumb, I'll say three thumbs, green thumbs, when you get it up there, I call them thumbs, I don't know.
Are they big enough for a tree?
Yeah, they are.
All the roots.
Could you put a tree in each of those?
Yeah, yep, those.
Here?
Oh, yeah, and, and the other one, top, the top of the long green one, yeah, there, yeah. I know you don't want to go down to the bottom, to the left corner because of the water flow, I believe, you got enough going on there.
I'd rather see them on the big island, I think, than those little tiny ones.
On the island, yes, but, I don't see what's wrong with a couple in each of those in time, you know, three row, and they get a little shade and.
They're good sized trees.
Big island, a series of, of larger trees, going, getting put in.
There's two large trees, two shrubs, and a cherry tree, which is not a large tree.
Okay.
Just to clarify, thank you, Jen.
Thank you, I'm not a landscape specialist, I'm sorry. When I see the scale of them, I thought that those are the large trees.
Yeah, I mean, I would also, I would say in addition to the green thumbs, along the bio retention area, it seems like there's a great opportunity, the darker green bio retention area.
Okay.
You know, you could plant some trees there, they'll do a wonderful job of shading your.
So what we're talking about is adding a tree here?
Yeah.
Here, here, and then?
And then maybe like three along there, yeah.
So six trees, is it?
And then I'd replace your cherry tree with a canopy tree, because cherry trees.
Okay, that's good, thank you.
You can do a flowering canopy tree if you want the flowers, but cherry trees just don't give much shade.
Cherry, cherry trees aren't, don't perform that well around here, do they?
Well, they had a bad, when the bugs.
The bugs love those things.
Yeah, this is a bad year for cherries.
Ask you what's a bad year too, the year before wasn't good.
They're fine.
A quick freeze, did it in on the fruit trees, and all the bushes, didn't bloom this year at the top because of that.
Yeah, and Thalia's and, and Cythia.
So you don't, maples or whatever?
Something native.
Faticula trees that the board really likes, or?
We always kept this question.
I would just take it with an arborist, you want a tree that's not going to sit there for a long time, you want it to grow, but you don't want a huge tree, you want to be.
You could do big trees.
Single tree, big tree outside myself is going to get knocked over with the wind, so there are, I walked Keene State Campus last Saturday, got a thousand different kinds of trees there, so there's got to be a tree out there that's, that'll survive and will grow, yeah.
So what we're talking about is the six trees we talked about, and replacing the cherry tree possibly with another tree. Okay. Not going to fight with trees, it's fine, you like trees too, so.
Okay, good. Can I ask for some clarification on the area next to the, next to the building? Looks like it's, you've got a drip edge, a six foot wide rock infiltration area, but that was also an area that somewhere else I saw was going to be vegetated, so.
What we, what we do in these areas is we basically can take the rock, push it back, take the plant, and put soil up to the surface and plant a plant in it, so this is a drip edge area that you can actually plant, so the water dripping off the edge of the building, even the dew in the, you know, in the mornings, as that runs off the building, can help water these plants.
Okay, hopefully you'll have somebody who knows what kind of plants are going to survive getting pounded with water.
Basically make a planter within the rocks, so you take, you push the rocks back, you take fabric, and you make a pot with the fabric, you fill that with, with topsoil, and then you plant a plant in it, and it can grow back in, and it'll grow down into the, into the soils below the two feet of stone, so two feet of stone, you know, around it, is so that that can be, it works very similarly to the way bio retention systems work.
Okay, I have another, just looking at the, at the parking lot, which is certainly one of the biggest changes on this, on this lot, aside, I mean, the building is, there's a building there, so I'm, I'm looking at what, what is being added or changed dramatically, and one thing that concerns, concerns me a little bit is just like pedestrian safety, people crossing, like say they're on the, on the southern, yeah, the southernmost parking area, and they're going to be walking up to the clubhouse, there's no, I mean, they're going to be kind of walking around cars, and I don't, I mean, have you, have you thought about doing something that will make it a passageway from parking lots to the buildings?
Sure.
A little bit?
So, part of this is, in golf courses, a lot of times, people will take their golf carts down to their cars, so some of that is, was one of the thought processes. Additionally, we just felt that the parking lot was small enough that we didn't need to have crosswalks in, in the, in the parking lot, we're not proposing a lot of truck traffic, some of those things. We have proposed the handicap spots such that you can go into the drive, you know, into the doorways and access the walkway that walks around this, this area. It partially, also because of the, the slope that this is on, we can't design a walkway that would meet code.
Because it'd be on a.
Because of the existing parking lot, you'd need handrail on it, so as an engineer, I can't come in here and say, okay, let's put a walkway up the side of this, because it would all be stairs, and so do we want to have a stair area, or are they going to continue walking up this parking lot the way they always have walked up that parking lot?
So if the parking lot is full, let's say it's at maximum capacity, they're going to go up to the end by the dumpster?
Sure.
And then cut down, they're just going to, you know, be doing a big loop to get around all the cars, they can't really, I suppose you could go, I don't know how much room there is in each lot, but.
For driving, though, but you can do whole loops now.
Right, in your car.
In your car, versus in the past, you had to back down out of, out of some of these.
That's not great.
Pileways.
Do you have, you have cart, golf carts?
Yeah.
So that's the other issue, you've got them, it looks like they're up by the dumpster too, so those, somebody's going to go check in, get their cart, go, and then they have to go through the parking lot, because they're not going to go over the bank where the deep pitches.
This is the, this is the golf, this is the active golf cart area.
Oh, that's it, that, oh.
Is this 15?
Oh, I see, so this is just storage.
Going out every day, this is storage.
Just storage, okay.
The golf, golf attendants can bring. The golf tendons can bring golf carts so that you can leave from the first tee and go.
First tee, okay. Oh, I'm glad to have clarification on that.
Yeah.
Had you ever... Had you considered by any chance, like you've got the vegetated island in the middle, had you considered maybe making that a T and further defining the entrance ways into the parking so that right now...
Coming all the way down to here?
And then draw your pen straight down from... Like at the end? Yes.
You want to use this?
Like making it a T so that with maybe some vegetation in there?
A thumb on each side.
We had not... One of the things was the turning radius coming in, and the... We're right at the property line here, and because of the slopes going up this hill, soon as we start touching all of this, it all falls apart because it's so steep. We would almost make things worse in a lot of ways. We went through this with a town engineer. They wanted, right now, the gutter line on the road is out here, right at the edge of the travelway. They wanted the gutter line pushed back to the property line. And then they wanted all the town water not to go onto your... Into our system. They wanted it all to continue down to Webster and the Catch Basin system that's further down. So we worked with them and said, "That really doesn't work." Well, originally, we wanted to take all the water here, but they said because we had stone on the town property line over the... You know, onto the right-of-way, that that was putting a drainage structure within the town property wasn't acceptable. So we worked with the town engineer and saying, "Let's keep the gutter line where it is, because if not, when we moved it over," I think it was like 12 feet, "and had that..." You know, we continued dropping the grade. It completely changed the grade on this whole lower part of the parking lot to like 12 or 15 percent, because it's already at, you know, steeper than we want. And so every time we started to touch anything on this bottom part of the parking lot to make it more level and more...
One thing leads to know.
Traditional. And then, and then, you know, we were looking at making this whole S parking lot, you know, so you'd have... You know, you'd enter here, and you'd start to go out, and then you'd come here, and you'd start to go up again. But then fire trucks could never make it in, because when you make it S and switchbacks, that was the only way that we could come up with trying to use this parking lot as a... And try to get it back up to code for the steepness of it. I mean, everybody's used to the way it is, so when we worked with the town and the Technical Review Committee, that was... And Mr. Sharp will tell me if I'm overstating anything. Those are the things we talked about mostly at the first meeting, and when... So... And it's stuff that we've been through throughout the process.
Okay.
One more parking lot question?
Sure.
Up by the loading dock. You're right. So I'm going to go from that. I got a little thing here that'll work. So from here, can I go steady hand? Can I get around here if there's someone unloading on the loading dock?
We believe you can, because this is about the width of a parking spot here, but anybody can go out this way.
Well, yeah, but then you... Assuming you can turn around and all the spots aren't full.
Sure. And this parking spot, this is 50 feet deep, so... Well, if this person pulls out to here, they can drive out this way. This is a 24-foot aisle.
I'm just saying, if you come in and up that road and every parking spot's taken, if you've got room to get through and go back down the other side.
Sure. So there's... You can back... This is always blank. This is a full parking spot width. You could back into there. You could back into this one.
I guess.
And, you know, so...
So I'm just trying to think of the vehicles that are going to be using that. I can see a Cisco truck come out delivering.
Yeah.
If they're running a trailer, then you're set.
You may end up giving up the two-end spaces so people get around.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
So originally, this area stretched back further. This retaining wall was further back. We had dumpsters right here, and what we worked out is to try to take these dumpsters, get them further away from the building. And so there was a little more space up here. But 20 by 50, I believe, is... Is that the requirement for a loading zone in...
What?
In town? 20-foot by 50-foot?
I'd have to look it up.
So, I mean, 50-foot is a long truck.
How tall is the wall at that point, from the surface of the parking lot to the top of the wall?
Let me grab it.
Is that where it's 15 feet?
So at this corner, it's from 83.4 to 99.9. So it's 16 and a half feet tall.
Wow.
That's a tall wall, huh?
It is a very tall wall.
Tall wall.
How about electric charging stations?
They have three.
What?
Ready three.
I'm sorry?
They need and they have three.
They have them, though. I just didn't see them.
Yep, they're EV-ready. They're noted somewhere on the list.
Okay, all right. If they've got them, that's fine. I just didn't see them.
The spots that pull up to the...
Restaurant?
To the restaurant, like there's that four-foot-wide sidewalk. Is there a curb there, or like what are you going to do to prevent...
Yeah, that's a curb.
Okay.
Vertical grant curb.
Will there be... I'm just concerned people are going to pull up and there... You know, there's always that little overhang, and then that makes that four-foot-wide sidewalk three or two and a half feet, and it's no longer accessible. Would you consider like throwing some curb stops in there just to keep people back from the sidewalk, since four foot's really a minimal size?
I understand. I mean, three foot's the minimum width on a sidewalk. I really don't like to design curb stops, because when they start plowing in the winter, it just makes a mess, because they can't plow clear to the curb, and that means now is there ice in there? Is it being held up? Is someone going to shovel it correctly? So personally, I don't like that. If the group and you guys want that, we'll put it on the plan, but that's my biggest concern with putting curb stops, because it's... Between that curb and that curb stop is a no man's land, and who gets out there and shovels it? And it's hard to keep clean.
Would there be... I mean, I almost hate to say this, but like, I'm just wondering if there's a way to make that sidewalk a little bit wider by pushing it back into the plant bed?
Utilization during the winter, because the paths close, they're all going to be more, so it's just going to be...
So you mean, bring the parking space out a foot, brings the sidewalk wider?
And she's giving up...
No, I'm saying move the... Make the sidewalk five feet wider and go into the plant bed even.
Oh, okay.
You know, five-foot sidewalk.
If you want a little less plant bed, that's...
I don't want less plant bed. I want more. I'm concerned about narrow sidewalks. I feel like they can cause hazards.
We'll do whatever the board wants. If you want to make that five foot and narrow the plant bed, I really don't want to push the whole parking lot this way because of the slope down the haze.
No, I wouldn't suggest that, yeah.
Yeah, no, no.
And just a point of clarification, it's going to be a very low-traffic sidewalk. A lot of the golf traffic is never going to even get to that sidewalk.
For the TV, can you use some mic?
I'm sorry.
Please, thank you.
Thanks, Gary Warner. Again, that'll be a low-traffic sidewalk, as the bulk of the golf traffic is going to come in at the first tee box level where the pro shop is. So the sidewalk's going to see very little traffic, to be perfectly honest. And I don't want to split hairs over a four-foot sidewalk or a five-foot sidewalk, but I just... I don't see that as a high-traffic area at any point during the season or after the season.
Oh, I thought that was like the main entrance to the building. Maybe I'm disoriented.
The restaurant.
To the restaurant.
The restaurant's on the backside.
We're all in golf, it's going to be congregating on the right side.
But if I'm arriving for breakfast and I need to go into the restaurant?
Correct.
I'm going to go in the front door.
Correct.
And anyone parking in the handicap spots are going to need to use that sidewalk. That's my main concern, really, is the people parking in the handicap spots. You need a certain width to maneuver.
Is this year-round? It's exciting.
Yeah.
They're sliders.
Yeah.
You can still sled.
You can go and get a hot chocolate.
And get hot chocolate.
It might be harder to sled going forward.
Yeah.
All right. I'd like to open it to the public now to speak a little bit, and I'd ask you, please, to have the microphone back and step to the microphone, please, and introduce yourself so we know who's speaking and our friends at home know who's speaking. Sir, you're on.
Good evening. Hey, my name is Greg McCarthy. I live at 4 Webster Avenue. I've lived there for about 12 years, and this is the first time I've been to any meeting anything like this, so bear with me...
You're doing great.
...as I make it through the protocols, procedures, et cetera, okay? I want to start off by saying, nobody wants a really good restaurant 400 feet from my doorway more than I do. I think that if the golf course can build a new building, improve the facility, improve what they offer to their customers, that's great. I think that's great for Exeter, great for the town, great for everybody. Having said that, if we look at... Uh, let's see, I'm not sure how to point this out most effectively, but if we look at where my property sits, I'm about three houses down on the north side of Webster Avenue. And one of the things that we touched on earlier before we got really interested in the tree order was the parking lot and its impact on runoff water and how that impacts the area around it. Now, I know that back in 1975, a special exception was needed for a parking lot to go in in the first place, and then that approval was granted. It was part of the information packet that was handed out, or that was on the town website, rather. And then another level of approval was going to be needed if that parking lot was ever to be paved. Now, I guess my... One of my general questions is, did that secondary approval process ever happen? And if so, were the needs of the residents on Webster Avenue ever taken into account? Because what is happening right now, our current state, is one that I consider to be unacceptable. The parking lot as it sits, that is half the current size of what is proposed, catches enough water, five or six times a year at least, to completely overwhelm Exeter's Catch Basin system. The water makes a mad rush downhill down Webster Avenue on the north side of the road until it hits my property, where it then makes a medium left about 45 degrees, straight through my property and into the backyard of the resident to the east of me. This is a problem that has been ongoing since 1975, and I know that it's continuing to damage my property, because back in the day, before this parking lot got paved, my property was a horse pasture, and it was more or less level with Webster Avenue. At this point in time, based on this consistent, however, 40, 50 years' worth of water running down the street, my property is now three to four feet lower than Webster Avenue for the bottom half acre of what I own. I point this out because back in 1975, your predecessor sat here and made decisions that had a negative impact on my property, and I'm personally asking you all to make sure that whatever decisions you make, at a minimum, don't negatively impact me and hopefully somehow make me whole. And I say that for this reason. There's a separate project that's ongoing in my neck of the woods that has to do with the JD Hill sewer system. It's what we're having the town meeting about in July or August. There's going to tear up the whole road again, even though we just paved it. So I'm just throwing it out there that somehow between these two projects, if we could find a way to keep all of this runoff off of Webster Avenue, the residents would greatly appreciate it. I don't know if that's possible or not. One thing about Webster Avenue is that it is highly crowned, very crowned. So once the water gets on one side or the other, it's not going back. And on the outside of the road itself, there is no mitigation of any kind. It just goes from road to dirt. So there has to be a solution that can allow a great project like this to move forward while also protecting the property of the surrounding homeowners. I hope that made sense.
Made a lot of sense.
The other... Now, I think that covered pretty much all the bases, although I will point out one other thing. There is a request for a waiver to Section 9.3.2 of the requirements around stormwater runoff, and there is also dialogue in here that shows that this mitigation system is now completely divorced from the town water system. Is that correct?
I believe so.
We're taking town water onto our property. Originally, do you want me to...
Just use the microphone, please.
So our original proposal had this whole island here also stoned so that this could take any water that was coming this way. Let me get the grading plan. It'll be easier. So our original plan had this whole island stoned and this whole island stoned, and had some drainage structures out in here to try to mitigate that problem. We had heard that there was problems there. The town told us they didn't want us to improve those structures that was on town property. So we have gone back and redesigned this so that we are just taking on our water. And then at the last Technical Review Committee, we said, when they asked us to move that drip, the water line, back onto the property, so we asked that we could take... Open up the curb on that island.
I understand that.
I'm just telling you... Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I don't think you're understanding the gist of my question. What I'm trying to find out is whether or not the residents of Webster Avenue will be completely reliant upon the golf course for any mitigation, any water runoff-related issues. Because if we're... If, and this says, "The connection of site drainage to the existing Catch Basin at JD Hill Avenue, Webster Avenue intersection, has been removed." So your system is not connected to the town system...
Correct.
...as Webster Avenue is concerned.
Additionally, we had a large area over here that was a drainage structure, and it was connected to the...
Yeah, I understand. I understand that.
We cut that connection, and we took all the water to the pond.
Okay, but I live there, and I have, I don't know how many videos and pictures, of the sheets of water that come off of that tar, and I don't think your rock hole... I don't know the terms. I'm a layman, sorry. I don't know. I'm wholly, wholly unconvinced that your pile of rocks at the bottom of the driveway is going to solve the problem, because once it gets past your driveway, it runs down, down, and into my yard. And I, you know, it's... What is it now? Middle of June? I still haven't mowed my entire yard yet. I haven't been able to. And as you all know, as the weather gets worse and worse, more and more unpredictable, more and more violent, these storms that exceed our capacity are happening on a much more frequent basis. I have videos that would blow your mind at the raging torrent of water that comes running down our road. It's crazy. And when I first moved in 12 years ago, it happened once a year, and now it's happening five or six times a year. And when I first moved in, my neighbor to the east of me had no issues in his backyard. Now his backyard is flooding as badly or worse as my side yard is, and eventually it's going to impact his basement as well. So I consider this to be an artificial, man-made problem based on the things we're putting in place and the decisions that we're making. So I need some decisions to be made that will mitigate and remove this problem from our lives. So I think I covered all my bases. I appreciate your time. I appreciate your time. I apologize for my passion, but this has been a long time coming.
You should be passionate.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We like fashion. Anybody else like to speak? Yes.
Hi, my name's Maria Kerski-Jo George. I live at 77 JD Hill Avenue, so I'm actually right on the corner of Webster Avenue and JD Hill Avenue. So I, I'm with Greg on the water issue. I can tell you, my husband and I, who is a member of the country club and is very excited about this project, we do spend hundreds of dollars every summer trying to make a rock basin of our own at the top of Webster to see if we can catch some of that runoff water and hopefully help Greg out. It doesn't work. We have a giant trench, pretty much all summer long, that is actually pretty dangerous for the kids in the neighborhood and the dog walkers that we have. It's, you know, you can't really see it when you're about to approach that curb, and it's a little scary. So if there is something we could do about the runoff that would be super helpful, it would save us money at Home Depot and it would help Greg and it would make a lot of people happy, so please address that. But I'm up here also speaking on behalf of just the residential side of the neighborhood. We love having the golf course. Like I said, my husband goes and plays every Wednesday with the guys when I allow him to. And, and so we really love being neighbors with the golf course, but we do ask that the planners and that the golf course really thinks about the neighborhood and the children in the neighborhood. I just have a five-month-old baby, so she's not running around yet, but the three homes that are directly across from the parking lot entrance do have children aging, in age range between about one years old and seven years old. So there's a lot of little kids playing right in that entrance. Those houses actually don't have large backyards, so they typically use their front yard as a play area for the kids. So there's a lot of little kids sitting right in that entrance. We have had a lot of issues with, obviously, speeding in that area with the open entrance to the golf course. It makes it, you know, really conducive to high speeds going in and out. At nighttime on the weekends, we do have some issues with perhaps a few too many beverages that are consumed on the golf course, and we've had kind of some like golf, weird golf cart almost getting run over incident kind of things. So, you know, we're naturally a little afraid of having such a large restaurant venue in a neighborhood like that with a lot of children and, you know, not a lot of space. So we just ask that the planners and the golf course really consider the traffic in that area and then, you know, whatever kind of policies they can impose on their visitors, on the restaurant goers as well, to make sure that we don't have a few too many beverages enjoyed and that people are watching their speed. And then, of course, the parking, this one's personally for me. The part, the excess parking that happens at the top of JD Hill, like you were mentioning on that small road, if we could get that to not happen, I have a lot of folks who park there because that's the easiest entrance to the driving range, and then they decide to like change into their golf outfits on my front lawn and stuff, and it's kind of awkward because it's not a very big property. So if there's anything we could do, yeah, to, yeah, to help out that people don't try to park on that street, or at least like, I don't know, make it better? I don't know. Whatever you can do so that I don't get that free show on the weekends. That's it. Thank you.
On that note, Dave, I'm glad you questioned. Dave?
Yeah.
Is, is that public town road back there?
My understanding.
Okay.
It's a continuation of JD Hill.
Yeah.
It is, okay.
It isn't about further down, is it?
There's one more.
There's one more, at the far end.
Oh, yeah, okay. It's just, yeah, it's asking for traffic, for parking, so anyway.
So as a town, I mean, the only way we can prevent people from parking there is put up no parking signs.
Right.
And do an ordinance to the select board, so nobody can park there. I don't think you can pick and choose who, you know, you allow parking or you don't.
No, no, and access is that.
On the public road.
Right.
On the public end, yeah, I'm just, yeah. Another person, two wanted to speak. Sir?
Greg, I mirror a lot of what you said. One thing I disagree with is I think I'm a little more excited for the project. I play golf at the country club multiple times a week. I live on JD Hill Ave, I'm two houses east of Greg. My name's Jacques Wagner-Macher, I live at 14 Webster Avenue. My only concern is the drainage, like Greg said.
Same thing, yeah.
Everything that goes through his yard into his neighbor's yard is in my yard. I have about a six-foot trench in the back of my property where water's been running through for, well, before I lived there. I moved there about 10 years ago. There's about a quarter of my yard, and I own about three-quarters of an acre, so you can do the math there, but it's impassable. If you walk through there, pretty much at any time, you're going to be in two inches of mud. Water comes into my basement regularly. My front yard next to the road where that high crown is washes down where we lose several inches of soil every year. I brought in 20, 30 yards of material last year just to try and get that back up, and it's already washing out. I don't know that this, how the parking lot is now is ideal. I think that's kind of what caused the issue, but as long as that drainage is addressed, that's really the only thing I want to say. I support the project wholeheartedly. I just don't want my home or my property to have any negative consequences because of it. So that's my piece.
Jacques, where are you? Just so I can think of a drainage.
I'm on the northern side, two houses east of Greg. If you look on the map there.
We're going to do the sidewalk.
Yes, please. Sidewalk, yes.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else? Yes.
Yes, please.
Good evening. My name is Alex Pearson. I live at 1 Webster Avenue, actually the former residence of Mr. Sherman Chester.
Okay.
I have a few comments. Basically, the drainage is obviously the biggest issue of the evening. Now, we are seeing, obviously, major problems with what's existing. Doubling the parking lot and adding a, what's the size of your, the island there?
The drainage.
No, 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 the one at the bottom. Please, if I could, could you please give us the elevation of the club to the elevation of JD Hill?
Sure.
Just so we get a scale of what we're talking about here.
Good reading. The club in this area is around 81.
Yep.
81 feet. And this was at 64, so 17 feet.
About 20 feet. Elevation change there. That's a tremendous amount of water to be rolling down a 20-foot hill. I'm not entirely sure the little island would work. I feel like it may end up on the other side of JD Hill. That's a lot of water. That's a very large parking lot. They're doubling the size of it. The other thing is also noticing the elevation change. We talked about 11 new lights. They're 20 feet up. All right? Now, dark sky is no horizontal broadcast, correct? That's tough to do when you're 20 feet up. All of those houses, you're going down in either direction. There's just a few view issues, but that size of parking lot. Thank you for listening to me.
Yep.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Gary Warren again. Obviously, I'm wildly biased because I'm part of the project, but I think it's important to make sure that everybody understands that this project was put together by, everybody who's invested in this project is, is community members, lives in the community. This isn't an equities fund coming in, this isn't a franchise coming in, this is partners that live within the community, that love the golf course, love the town of Exeter, want to do something special here. With that said, we're going to be partners with the golf course, we're excited about that. Golf course is going to run the golf course, we're going to run food and beverage services. We're obviously investing a substantial amount of money to do this, as the course doesn't have the funds to do this, but we want them to focus on the golf course. I've heard all the butters, and it's our goal to be very good neighbors. It was, I was unaware that we didn't have to have so many lights. That doesn't bother me because right now there's about two lights out there, and less lighting also means less building costs, so we look forward to any dialogue in regards to lighting and how it might impact the neighbors. I think drainage, from day one, we knew drainage was going to be an issue. We have worked very hard with Bruce. I think everybody should know that the town hires independent engineers that to review this plan, it's not just by the town, it's not just our engineer pitching, we want to do this. No matter what, we know that this plan, at a bare minimum, is going to improve drainage for that neighborhood. How much of it's caused by, you know, the drainage issues or the wetness in lots, how much of it's caused by that parking lot, I can't speak to. But what I do know is it's important to us to help that neighborhood, to get this water off of there. We love the idea. It's going to cost us money to get this to the ninth pond because we think that'll help the golf course. We think that that's free water to the golf course, that their well doesn't have to pump so much. So in the spirit of this, I just want everybody to be clear, we're looking to be good neighbors. We want to help Jacques, we want to help Alex, everybody in that whole neighborhood. There's nothing we've done that we believe is going to make it worse. And if another engineer looks at this and thinks there's something that can be done or needs to be expanded, we're not opposed to that. We've tried to put forward a plan that really mitigates that. And my understanding is, is that this is designed to take any water from our parking lot and keep it on the golf course property, and ideally the golf course sprinklers and all that are going to use it and put it right back in the, in the land. So I just, I just wanted to be clear to make sure everybody understood that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I just want, I just wanted to dovetail a little bit on what he said. In my opinion, if you take the front face of that parking lot, the part that lines up with JD Hill Avenue, if the drainage mitigation solution doesn't cover the entirety of that span, it will fail. The water, the engineers, I have a feeling things are being designed for commonplace every day, rainstorms, you know, March to April to May to June. What people are failing to consider are the bigger storms that we are now getting, and we're getting them more and more frequently, and we are not designed to cope with the bigger, more volatile storms where we're getting two and a half inches of rain in an hour. It overwhelms all of our systems, and so the water has nowhere to go but into our yards. So unless I see the mother of all water catchment systems, I will vigorously oppose this part, the parking lot portion of what we're talking about.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, we're going to have a sidewalk.
I think we need that.
I think we need one.
You'd like to, I do too, yeah.
And I know with the rest of the board.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, I'd like to, yes.
So anybody, I just, if there's any other comments, I'd like to hear them. We'd the board.
There was a letter.
Oh, yeah, so we have a letter to be read, please. And then I'll close the public hearing.
Hi, Dave. My husband, Sherman Chester, and I have concerns about the Exeter Country Club project that will be discussed tonight. We live on Webster Ave and propose changes that the ECC will affect us and other residents on Webster Ave and JD Hill Ave. Webster Ave is a dead-end street and the only entrance and exit is JD Hill Ave. When exiting Webster Ave, drivers have no choice but to pass by ECC on JD Hill Ave. In reviewing the package involving the ECC renovation project, the major concerns that we and abutting neighbors have expressed is increased traffic flow and traffic control problems on JD Hill Ave. ECC members don't often look when entering and/or exiting the ECC parking lot. Increasing parking at ECC may cause more problems for residents who live on Webster Ave and JD Hill Ave. Those in the neighborhood have experienced drivers that don't stop when entering and exiting ECC. Some ECC members drive across the road in front of our cars as if we were not there. Other drivers don't stop and look at oncoming traffic when exiting ECC onto JD Hill Ave. Please note that the EC, that ECC member vehicles don't have the right-of-way and need to yield to oncoming traffic on JD Hill Ave. No one wants to see the chance of an accident increase due to this project. As part of their project, the Hill slash firm where the current ECC sign is located should be lowered to give member guests more visibility for oncoming traffic. Perhaps a stop sign should be added. One other concern is whether or not there will be a review of any runoff and existing sewer capacity at the ECC. There are concerns that the clubhouse restaurant will overload the existing drainage and sewer system. There were problems in the past with the clubhouse sewerage, and we hope these issues are examined and addressed where applicable. Unfortunately, we are unable to attend the meeting tonight, but we are hoping you will share our concerns. We appreciate your time in this matter. Thanks. Best regards, Sherman Doreen Trester, 3 Webster Ave, Exeter, New Hampshire.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public session at this point, and do you have a motion or a comment?
Well, I'd just like, I guess a comment, but I would like to know if the rest of the board is interested in taking a site, making a site visit. I think I was unaware of the severity of the drainage issue, and I'd like to look at it myself.
Yeah, yeah. Everybody agree with that? Yeah, I see nothing. Everybody's head's bobbing, so.
So when you, when you guys.
What is it we're looking for is what Mr. Sharp was going to ask.
No, may I invite, I'm thinking like, what I, because I'm not the engineer, I don't get into the, you know, stormwater drainage, I don't, but I think we'd benefit from like, do we know where this water is coming from? Because there might be some water that's from JD Hill that isn't coming from this site. I don't know. You know, maybe a lot of it is coming from this site. So having someone like maybe the town engineer or UEI engineer come and kind of explain that whole dynamic to what's going on. Because there might be two issues here. There might be a, a public right-of-way drainage issue, you know, separate from, you know, the country club. So I don't know really exactly what's going on. I know the Paul Vlasic and Allison Reis are engineers, were very involved with, with this scheme, but maybe they need to.
Because they both.
Have them come to either the sidewalk or the next meeting and kind of explain a little bit more about it. And then Bruce, maybe you can explain, you know, the drainage report and where the water's coming from. Because there's a crown on JD Hill not far from this, right, that starts going down the other way? The crown's there.
Yep.
And it goes that way.
Yep, from this point, it goes that way.
Exactly, okay.
Yeah, so this is the peak of the hill.
Right there, okay. So trying to get it under there.
Right at the, right at the siren pole.
So most of JD Hill flows the other way.
Correct.
I mean, most of what flows down Webster comes from there and beyond.
Correct. I 100% agree with you.
Yeah. And then what, because there was some existing space, because our regulations, our stormwater regulations say, you know, any project, you can't increase the, you know, post-development rates of runoff, can't increase pre-development rates. So you can't make it worse, but that doesn't tackle an existing problem.
Correct.
Well, I mean, on the site, can't say, okay, you need to take what, everything, but, but having the engineers involved to see what they've done and what we can do to mitigate it, at least make it no worse, and then how better are we making it?
Correct.
But you, you think you've made it better?
Well, I know we've made it better. I guarantee that. I don't think we've solved the problem that everybody's talking about here. Because it's that, you can't do that without doing additional work, which we originally proposed to do, that the town asked us not to do. So, because we were originally, we were going to put a whole island here to try to work as a safety net for drainage.
And direct the water onto the course?
At that point, it was just to store water in here. We were going to, we were going to regrade this whole area.
And then you're going to put it into the town's catch basin.
Yeah.
My understanding is the DPW did not want that.
Yeah, so that's.
And there were all those trees would be, had to be, a lot of trees would be removed.
Exactly, there was.
And so forth.
There's a lot of negatives that go with it, but we were trying to solve the drainage issue. And that was.
Maybe.
It sounds like the amount of water they're getting, that little pond isn't going to do much.
Engineers.
Not that, what you were thinking of doing.
And just so you guys know.
It would have made it a lot better than it is.
Anybody wants its schedule?
How would we find out about when it's scheduled?
They're going to talk about it right now.
Yeah, we're going to schedule now, yeah. The only other thing I, to deal with some of the driving concerns that Maria had, is we put in stop signs and stop bars so that you, and then if someone blows through that sign, then it's, the police can, you know, give them tickets and stuff like that. So right now, as you know, it's all open. You can drive out any place along that whole entrance. By narrowing this and making it so that they have to go in front, you know, on the right side as you, as you exit, and with a stop sign, we have tried to address the safety issue so that people aren't just driving out of there. Now, I'm not there, I can't prevent people being stupid because people do that on any driveway, you know, anywheres. But we have done what we can to address that with, on both of these entrances, and narrowing it down.
Yeah, we did have them look at one curb cut, but just based on the existing conditions, it really didn't, it couldn't work to get vehicles to turn public safety and so forth, to get in and get out. So we felt that was the, that was the best solution, was to cut it into two curb cuts instead of leaving one large one.
So what's a good date to do this? When, when will this?
Tell me. We usually do them at 8:00 AM, right?
Yes.
Yeah, 8 o'clock in the morning.
And it'll also be noticed on a public, on our website and in two public places, that that thing. So, but tonight it'll say it, but it'll also be posted in case you forget. Go on our website for agendas and minutes.
Website, first page, lower, left-hand corner, agenda and minutes. It has to be posted there.
It'll also tell you right now, once they, so are you looking at, they're going to bring them, the next meetings, you, you're going to table it to the 22nd, June 22nd meeting?
Yes.
So if you do that, then you got to have it, you know.
Before then.
Next week, you need 24 hours posting, so tomorrow's out. Next week or early the week after, like 19th to 20th, Monday or Tuesday. Or even Wednesday or Thursday. I mean, you can do anywhere from Monday through Friday, the 12th through the 16th, or the 19th through the 22nd.
Okay, the meeting, next meeting's on 22nd.
On the 22nd. Yeah, I mean.
However, it might count.
You could do it on that morning. I mean, you've done that before to kind of keep it everyone fresh in everyone's mind.
Fresh in mind, yeah.
Should we do like a, a Plan A and a Plan B? Because we have to check the engineers' schedules to make sure that they can attend on a date that we choose. Or we find we're just starting with one and then?
Well, we're going to start.
Yeah, I mean, the backup, we could, we could, I think, I'd suggest just picking a date.
Okay.
And then if they can't make it, I'll get them to either zoom in or attend the next planning board meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Because I think we need to hear from them.
Yeah.
Yeah, or, or.
At least one of them on the side.
Yeah, I do too. After hearing all this and the concerns, I think.
I think at least one on the sidewalk. I, I'd like.
No, I'd like, I'd like them to, but I, I don't know how, you know, let's take a day or two.
The 21st or the 22nd?
Yeah.
If you can't get the 22nd, get the 21st, the day before.
8:00 AM is when you do it?
8:00 AM.
One if they can't do either.
Yeah.
Get a new engineer.
Yes, no, we're, um.
Okay.
I'm going to go with the 21st then.
When do you have to post it if we have it on?
Well, 24 hours.
But it's still putting it really tight if we wait till the 21st.
Then the 21st, and then the rain date's the 22nd. A rain date would be good.
I was going to say.
No rain date. That would be nice.
I'm looking for rain.
See what happens with rain.
You'll see me if it rains.
Best way to figure it out.
Well, you don't want to.
I usually visit sites when it rains all the time, but I'm, I guess my next one is this one. So 20, do we decide?
21st.
21st.
At 8:00.
6:31.
June 21st.
8:00.
Thursday, ah, Wednesday, June 21st at 8:00 AM.
We want to look at the parking lot. We want to look at.
Yeah, can they mark the parking? Can you mark where the parking, or where the entrance is?
Parking extent of?
Yeah, the.
Yeah, maybe, maybe mark where your storage vehicle, your storage for your parts.
Yeah, mark out the.
Kind of mark out what it's going to be.
Mark out the dry well, mark out that, yeah.
What about the?
And how you shrunk the opening there? Yeah.
It.
Maybe up top, though, just the, the corners of the parking lot, the expansion.
Would we already marked the extent of the figuring that we would, that was going to be a question? I think we did that several months ago.
Okay.
Have you already tagged the trees that are coming down?
I have not tagged the trees.
Tag those.
That'd be good.
We should be able to see them when we go out there.
Okay.
With, with the corners. Yeah, as long as we know where the parking lot's going, we'll see them.
Okay. You're going to be there for us?
I'll be there.
The 21st at 8:00.
Yeah.
Will let us know if that's not going to work.
You got that, Bruce, what we're looking for?
Well, I think if we basically say we're clear-cutting everything along this tree line, then you'll know that that hole.
Know where it is, yes. Yeah, that'd be good. Yeah.
Clear enough?
Yeah.
Okay. And we're talking about trying to show over this island?
What's going on there? Yeah, and what's.
So if we, if we spray paint this island?
Yep.
And.
The finger.
We're cutting out pavement here, so we're spraying this area?
Yep.
Because that right now, this, this pavement goes all the way down.
No, we're only, what about the other end? Is that always shortened too?
This is existing.
That's existing, okay.
I think we're adding curb cuts.
Yeah, okay.
So that is, but that's not changing the location.
Plenty of parking lots to be there at 8:00 in the morning to walk.
On a weekday, I can imagine.
I don't know, I don't golf. That's why I want to make sure.
Don't park on the dirt road.
You park on.
Okay, I'm looking.
Offered as a court.
Looking for a motion to table?
Um, so moved.
Excuse me?
Oh.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me.
I'm, I moved that we tabled this proceeding until 7:00 PM on.
22nd of.
22nd, 22nd of June.
June 23.
Same place, same station.
Same bad station, okay.
Second.
Moved in a second. Voice for those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Thank you. Carrie, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That is a public meeting, by the way.
You're all welcome.
Right.
Thank you all for coming, by the way. No, no, I'm, we're serious.
No, really, we are serious.
Appreciate it.
It's so good to have.
These are the neighbors we're waiting for.
No.
Here. No drain, no upside.
Okay.
Kristen's still here.
What's that? Reminded us that at 8:00 AM, the school buses are in the neighborhood.
I mean, we do, we do hear.
FYI.
From your folks.
Yes.
Because that's where we get the feedback.
Still in good smell, right?
And it's very important that we have that.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And what we like is a compatible idea.
I'm going to.
Golfers.
Yeah.
No, no. God, bring them in, huh?
Okay. Now from the sublime to the ridiculous.
No.
Sorry about that.
They're everywhere you see them.
Okay. The application of Meniscus Financial Holding LLC for the preliminary conceptual review for the proposed construction of a vehicle storage slash display area and associated site improvements on the property located at 127 Port Smith Avenue. Subdivided property is located in C2 Central Area Commercial Zoning District. Tax map parcel number 52-111-2. Planning board case number 23.7. This is a, just more of a discussion, so we're not taking any action tonight. It's just, they want to share their ideas with the board and get a sense before they put their plans together.
Excuse me, how did we assign this a planning board case number?
Because it was an application that came to the planning.
And that's what automatically assigns the case number.
Correct, yeah.
Regardless of what the process is after that.
Correct. There's, there's three different phases. You can ask for a preliminary conceptual consultation where butters aren't notified. You got to keep the conversations at a high level. No talking about specific engineering details and so forth.
Yes, we haven't provided any.
Just, just, just high level. And, you know, as it says, you know, in conceptual form only and in general terms, such as the desirability of types of development proposals under the master plan. Then there's the design review phase, which is also a preliminary review phase. No action taken, non-binding, you know, nothing you say can and you can or will be.
Yeah, right.
It's in the record, but we're just.
It says, that's not the exact language. It says, you know, it's non-binding. So, and then it's formal application.
Yes, okay.
They, they chose to submit a preliminary conceptual, for a preliminary conceptual consultation. And they're here to talk about, you know, just generally the project and get reaction.
Thank you for enjoying to stay with us, gentlemen. And Kristen, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Christian Smith, engineer with Beals Associates. Tim and Larry Foss are both with me here tonight, proponents for the project, and members, as I'm aware, of Meniscus Financial Holdings LLC. So recently come back, well, it's come back to the, to the Foss family, this piece of property with the subdivision and all of the things that went on with Sylvania property. You will all probably recognize this as just a big lawn, the road into the Sylvania building. And out front, that, that kind of square you see towards the front of the property is just a split rail fence around a landscape area at this time. But the reason we wanted to come before you preliminarily is when, when we began, and when I say we, I mean, Jim Gove from Gove Environmental and myself started talking with the Fosses about this property, you know, what we, what we realized very quickly, there are a couple of proposed wetlands to fill. These are both man-made from decades ago excavation that, that just went too deep. And, and you see a building here, that is actually part of a potential future phase. That would not be done immediately. But the, the bigger idea is that, you know, they've, they've got their area here for the car dealership, and they are really desperately in need of more inventory storage. So that's, that's all we're trying to create here. Couple of things come into play. You can see in the green, that's your 300-foot shoreline protection setback. And of course, that is the setback from the Exeter reservoir. In the orange, in the larger hatching, that is the 150-foot line. And then we tried to do some tight red hatching for the two wetland areas that would propose to be filled under this scenario. So a couple of things we, we want to speak with you on, and the Conservation Commission, which I should let you know we were going to be on next Tuesday. The chairman was concerned about the number of items they had on the agenda, so we have been bumped to July 11th with the Conservation Commission. But anyway, so as we detail through here, we've got just about two acres of 300-foot shoreline protection impact in the 300-foot buffer. And we've got just about 2100, 21,000 square feet in the 150-foot buffer. What the proposal is graded as now is to bring it over into detention and treatment and infiltration areas at these locations. And we just kind of want to get your input on it. Jim thought it was a very good idea, Jim Gove, to, to get the Conservation Commission's input on it, because obviously, you know, these conditional use permits are going to be absolutely key to the project. And, and we did contemplate, we talked about impervious pavement, just not a good fit for a, for a vehicle storage area. You know, you're going to have big vehicles coming in there, turning. That just spalls and, and breaks that stuff apart because there's not enough bituminous material in it.
What about concrete?
Concrete? Well, it's still impervious.
Yes.
Impervious concrete.
Huh?
Impervious concrete, hey, but.
Yeah, I just don't think any of that's going to hold up well, do.
I was just saying.
Truck trailers, you know, I mean, tra, car trailers. Did McFarland do it? I thought McFarland did it on their vehicle storage.
No, I don't think so.
Can you use that with any tractor-trailer?
Yeah, I mean, but it's like they keep the lane open so you can use heavy truck traffic and then drop it off. And the parking stalls where the heavy trucks don't go, they do pervise. So it's, it's a, it's a.
Oh, oh, so kind of a travel way of conventional pavement.
Correct, correct.
And where the cars are stored.
I'm not suggesting that. I'm just saying that's what I've seen done to solve the tractor-trailer issue.
My overall initial comment is people are going to move, really miss the beauty of the grass there. That's, but that's what it is, you know?
But Mr. Chairman, think about those beautiful cars.
Yeah, I, well, um.
All electric vehicles.
Not all, because I'm not jumping on that bandwagon. I don't trust those nothing batteries.
That's been a nice green, but you so long, Portsmouth Ave.
Yeah.
Earlier today, I was just looking at, you know, Google Street View of Portsmouth Avenue. There's, there's a lot of car dealerships, and they have a visual weight to them, like as you're going down Portsmouth Avenue. But I think the ones where, and like the Hannaford parking lot, I think is a good example, where there's like a really generous landscape buffer along the corridor before the parking starts helps visually. So I feel like that's something that.
Soft a little bit, yeah.
Yeah, like as much as possible, when we're putting all these like parking lots on Portsmouth Avenue, I'd love to see just like, you know, I don't know what the dimension needs to be, like whatever. The one at Hannaford seems to be decent, like whatever that is maybe. It would just be, rather than having them like so close.
And Jen, so you're talking about after you go by their first entrance closest to the building?
I got a picture of this somewhere.
Because I want to drive by it tomorrow and look what you're talking about.
Yeah, like, like the, the whole frontage on Portsmouth Avenue for that, not, I'm not just, it's the whole Hannaford, that plaza.
Yeah, yeah.
There's like the new dentists.
Between the sidewalk and the pavement.
Yeah.
Yeah, I.
Yeah. Yeah, I can't tell in this plan like how much it is, but you know, if we could kind of like target whatever their thickness is versus what I think, I mean, think, you guys have a little bit, but it might not be as.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It might not be as wide.
Some trees, although I don't know how they do with pavement around them all the time.
Well, if that buffer is big enough, the vegetated buffer, then yeah, some trees, some shrubs, just, I mean, I know you want to show off the cars too, but I think there's a nice, like, can you see like the Subaru dealership up in Stratum did it? It's like, I mean, they've got a very nice landscape space in front. You can still see the cars.
Is this overflow though? This is not for customers, right? Yeah. So it's not for display and it's not for people walking around?
But they will be displayed, yeah.
For us.
Okay, because McFarland was, and they were just like, no, we, we don't have customers back there. You're going to have customers walking around this.
Okay, that's, that's.
So it's not just.
They're having more.
It's the supply.
Yeah.
And part of this, and one of the very small wetland impacts, is we, we do propose to connect in to their existing parking lot on, on the current car dealership property.
Yeah, that's right on, right at the exit, right at Portsmouth Ave.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, generally we like intersections to be.
Well, there, there's a big wet swale that runs down there, so we're.
Yeah.
We're trying to minimize that as well. We've got a lot at play here.
We can bring it back.
So, I mean, we can pull it back and just propose a little more wetland impact. Again, that's, that's just a man-made swale, Dave, that runs down through there.
Yeah, okay, so if it's a man-made swale, I mean, yeah, I mean, I just, you know, who puts an intersection next to, you know, a curb cut next to an intersection? So I haven't seen that before. That's a little odd, I think, of it.
Well, it just, there's an aisle there. It just was a good place to tie it. And up close, it just happens to be up close to the road.
Do you, yeah, you, I mean, I usually see 75 feet from a, you know, from an intersection till you have a curb cut.
Right.
You know, I mean, this is like.
Yep.
Two feet.
Yeah, and, oh, and bear in mind, one thing I failed to mention is that at, at some point in the not-too-distant future, we understand GTE is going to give up that road, and they will be taking a driveway off of Hollandway, correct?
One of the buildings is going, putting in their own, and I, I don't know what's going on there.
No.
I don't think it's going anywhere.
No, it's not going anywhere. Ozram is going to use GTE Road exclusively. We had had this conversation during the subdivision, and when C.A. Wakefield came in to do their addition, they created a curb cut on Hollandway. We asked if Ozram could also participate in that to get them to get heavy, because taking a left out of here is, you know, good luck sometimes.
Right.
So it's a level service app. But so we would like to, for safety, get them out there, but they, the talks broke down and they did not.
And we were, and, and I understand people, we told them a million things. We were told when we bought it.
Can you keep her in the mic, please?
Oh, sorry. Who was coming off that road?
Sylvania Wood or Ozram.
Ozram's not going to use GTE.
That's what we were told. I'm not saying it's the truth.
But when was that?
Right as we were signing paperwork, so.
When, do you know?
Last October.
Yeah, that's changed. Yeah, because we were in discussion, we were kind of wanted them to go over there and kind of take the pressure off of us with that.
We've got.
You're, you're good.
For Exeter TV, we have to have you on the mic. Thank you.
On that, if, if they were to ever leave it, truthfully, like we do in some of our On that, if, if they were to ever leave it, truthfully, like we do in some of our curb cuts right now, we'd park across that, we would stop it.
Yeah, and it was, it wasn't designed, they didn't design C.A. Wakefield to do that because of the grades, and it's, I, it's, to me, and we're talking to both the parties involved, it has not happened. They are going to continue to use GTE.
Okay, right, we were, we were told something different as the process was going on, so...
So you were looking at seven, a different entrance for fosses use from the GTE road?
No, the GTE road would still be the access in here.
Okay.
And I could walk you through this line, it might be easier if I flip to the color.
I think what they were saying is they thought that Ozram was going to abandon the use of it.
That's what we thought, is Ozram was going to use the entrance off of, yeah.
That's what we wanted to.
And, and this I really did in hopes that Gwen would be here tonight. Because when I don't do enough colors for Gwen...
Always here.
I, I feel like I'm being scolded by my high school teacher. So now this has the actual pavement building, the actual pavement building, grassed area and tree area that will remain, as well as the overlays of the impacts to the, to the shoreline buffers. So that is the little bit of connection. You know, again, we were just trying to avoid this little swale here. We can move that up as far as we want to and put a culvert under it, it's not a huge issue.
So that will remain as a grassed area as it is now?
This year?
That's, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, because it's virtually all wetland, again, man-made, but it's still jurisdictional at this point in time and would require state permitting to, to impact.
So that wetland north of GTE road is not connected?
This?
Yeah, it's not connected to like the greater wetland system that's back there.
No, no. This is, this is a swale that was built, I assume, to deal with some of the runoff from the parking lot, some of the GTE road, and it just kind of dies back here. There's an isolated pocket here, an isolated pocket there, and these two, as I say, were decades ago just overexcavated as part of a mineral excavation operation.
Are you saying all these up here were man-made? Because during C.A., they didn't designate that, yeah.
That's what Mr. Gove told me.
Okay.
Jim, Jim Gove and I walked out there on several occasions, and he feels that that, that whole thing is, is man-made.
So you have room to put the tree buffer in once, I think, right?
Yeah, we do. I think what we've got here is five feet minimum from the edge of the pavement to the sidewalk. Is that a sidewalk? Yes.
There is one there.
So I think we've got a minimum of five feet, it kind of tapers out bigger there, so, you know, there's area to plant there, I mean, we could tuck that back a couple of feet.
What I was saying is like the generous, the more generous buffer like they have at Hanaford, which I think is, I was just looking at, it looks like it's like 15 feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, seriously, if you can make that wider.
That would help a lot, because then you can put, you know, a tree and like pumps of shrubs and...
It is right on Portsmouth Ave, so...
Yes, sir.
No, I don't...
So let's make it a nice-looking parking lot, a welcoming parking lot, you know?
The bumpout is in here, I guess.
And do either of you guys have any idea how many, you know, how long it might take till you get to the point where you're going to need that second building?
I don't know.
Okay.
I didn't get it off, not...
Will it be lit?
Yeah, they would, they would have to light it for vehicles, you know, vandalism safety.
Were we talking about the one before, Dave McFarland's? It's lit, but aren't they...
Well, they have to be on a timer and shut off after 10:00 PM or reduce significantly, reduce in intensity.
Oh, okay.
I don't know, I don't remember, that was a while ago.
Yeah.
Have to pull the...
We, same lighting system, they're all computer-generated and they, they dim down and stuff like that, or they're supposed to, I don't know. I don't go at 1:00 to look, but...
They do it at 10:00, right?
Yeah, they're supposed to.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I should drive around more at 10:00, but I just don't, I'm sleeping usually, or here.
Yeah, and if you did not have lighting out there, there'd just be way too much opportunity for vandalism.
Yes, and we had that with the McFarland Ford one, too. We just want to make sure that, that, you know, light pollution isn't an issue.
Right.
So there's no tree cutting, it's all, this is all...
There's, there's a little bit, Gwen, by where the building sits on the secondary man-made wetland, because that kind of goes up the hill. As you get up the hill, the trees get a little better, but it's a lot of scrub, shrub, and, you know, just whips and things like that, it's not very attractive.
Secondary growth.
Yes, yes.
Right.
There's like some ornamental stuff associated with that sign, I think. There's like a few, there's a weeping mellow.
In the landscape island?
Yeah.
Sucking up all the water.
Sucking up all the water.
She put it on the screen up there, will you? We can see what you're looking at.
Oh, sorry.
No, no.
Oops, wow, sorry.
Here we are.
I just drove down the road too.
There you go.
Oh, boy. There's a weeping mellow there, now we're on GTE road.
Yeah, yeah.
Food locally.
But it's not, it's just ornamental, I think it's valuable. Well, I'll be interested to hear what comes out of the July 11th meeting with CONCON.
It's CONCON. Yep.
Yes.
And anything else jumps out at you folks as we look at this from here?
No impact on waterworks?
Uh, no, in fact, we keep the, we propose the building and the little drive aisle around it in front of the water easement that takes the main frosts through there.
Anybody think of anything else? That's all we can come up with tonight.
All right.
It's not that late, but we don't get...
You've had a long night.
Thank you for coming in, that's all.
Yeah, no, and we appreciate your time and, yeah, obviously, you know, it, it might behoove us while we're putting together a formal application after the Conservation Commission hearing that perhaps we do a site walk with, with both the committee and this board. I think that would probably be useful, but that's a bridge we can jump off when we get there.
So you're on the 11th, then, on the Conservation Commission, too?
Oh, perfect. So you can fill them in, and I'm about to speak.
No, no, no. It's all on you.
All right, thanks very much for your time, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Yeah.
Thank you, have a good night.
Good night.
And Gwen, what do we think? Save it, save it.
I've been, I've been trying to think of a good comeback, but it's going to take me a while. You surprised me.
Now that we know you can do it, we're expecting it.
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to go back to our minutes.
Yeah, and I'm trying to understand how I messed that up, and I'm going to look again.
So I think we go with April 13th first, please?
So my notes say, as amended, Nancy and Gwen, does anybody remember what happened that night? Did, did we like go through? Because I have minutes.
What? What, what minutes are you looking at?
I have, I have, April 13th. So this is my packet from May 25th. I threw the poor chair off at the beginning of this meeting. So I have April 13th, as amended, Nancy and Gwen, so something must have happened where we decided, I don't, it's driving me crazy.
I wouldn't have been so...
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. I, it says, Ms., so I'm looking at the minutes for May 25th, and it says, Ms. Belander motion to table approval of the April 13th meeting minutes as amended.
Right, but I...
Ms. English seconded the motion, a vote was taken out of favor. Why'd we table it?
That's what I'm trying to remember, I didn't notice until I got here, so, anyway.
Something about checking into something on them, I think, I don't know, but...
Anyway.
And then we table it here.
Because I have as amended for the May 11th.
Why don't we just...
Nancy and John, so I just want to make sure we're not doing it twice, that's all, anyway.
Why don't you just do the April 13th once again? That wasn't his...
Yeah, let's do April 13th again, and if we have, you know...
Okay.
Do we mean again?
Yeah, no, well, not again.
First time, table them.
No, no, no. It doesn't look like, yeah, it looks like we tabled them according to the, the next, the May 11th.
Well, I had a couple of things if we want to talk about it.
Yes, go ahead.
174, which is page five.
Oh, five, okay, 174, okay.
And of course, Mr. Brown, not here.
Not here.
But there's something, I, I don't quite understand. Mr. Burns indicated there no, were no hits at Natural Heritage Bureau or species. Now, I think I know what that means, but I'm not quite sure. Does anyone else?
It means, so when they do, when you, for the state, yeah, you basically have to submit your project into a database, and if it hits, it means like a sighting or whatever.
So therefore, that's meaningful to everybody but me?
Well, it's meaning, I, I just kind of know what they mean, maybe it could be...
I understand that too, because same kind of thing.
I understand that, but I don't understand invasive species. It's usually threatened or endangered species you look for on New Hampshire Heritage Bureau. They don't have a list of invasive species, so it doesn't...
I think they said this, but I think I remember it being, I think I remember thinking...
Let's leave it alone then.
I think they did say, I remember that, they said invasive, and I was like...
Maybe he just took it as endangered, he answered it that way.
Yeah.
All right, well, then, I'll withdraw it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Further on that same page, down to 184.
Brown again, huh?
And whether one day the necessary O, the variance should not be required. There's something, is that...
Maybe it's the necessity of...
Necessity of the variance?
One day A. So to take, whether A variant, whether one day A variance?
As I say, the O just angling at the end there.
Get rid of necessary O and the...
It's right here.
Strike it.
One day A.
And it'll read, and whether one day the variance would not be required.
Okay.
That's why I was talking.
I think he kind of rambled on and said, threw a couple of extra words in there, but that's what he tried to say.
So a couple of extra words in?
No, he, he added that, I remember what he said. So I think what he said was one day the variance would not be required. Striking that is basically what he said.
Yep, that's good.
Shortened, edited.
All right.
Short version.
And then one other thing on line 249.
Okay.
Is that what I wanted?
Don't know.
Oh, this was, this was your extra, or your additional condition to this approval. And it said, shall be consistent with what was presented this evening?
Yeah.
Well, all right, what was presented that evening?
It was the responses to the UEI comment.
Okay, so, so that's, there was something presented at that meeting, which is part of the record.
This is the exact wording of the condition that was taken, that was adopted by the planning board.
That's right, and I had some problems with the wording then, and I...
Haven't gotten it figured out yet.
I still have, but it's, it's all right, don't worry.
Yeah, no, I did, it's, they submitted final plans, they were consistent, so it's kind of a moot point now.
Yeah, all right, fine, forget it. All right, thank you. That was 0 for 3.
Anybody else?
I felt good.
Well, not all, no, no, we got...
All right, I'll move that, I'll move that we adopt them in their original, un...
No, no.
No, 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 we do need to make that change.
We did, we did edit.
No, necessary O.
Yeah.
Necessary O though, as amended.
Yeah, and then we, yeah, and we also, line on 184, we took out the phrase the necessary of.
Yeah.
All right.
One day the very...
I beg your pardon, as...
As amended, right?
As amended.
And I will second.
Okay. Voiceful, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, thank you.
Actually, that...
Oh, one abstention, two out of... One abstention.
All right. Now, what was the next set?
The next set in order would be May 11.
Yep.
May 11, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for May 11.
Um, yeah, can we get there? I just want to get there, yeah.
Okay, we got a motion on the table, haven't I got a second yet?
Discussion.
A little discussion about it, and then I'll look for a second?
I'm sorry, I'm trying to get, I have notes from it, so I can second for discussion if you'd like.
Second for discussion, thank you very much.
I would like to get to the, so on 101, no, it's different. Right, we, Gwen and I have, oh, wait a minute, let me get there. Okay, so, on one, line 101, page three or four, marsh, comma, I can't read, no. The plan is eight miles next year, and I think we were trying to, I know, we did this, I know.
We did, remember this?
Right, and it was something that you had said about the plan, do you remember?
Eight miles, that's eight miles this year.
I don't remember anybody eight miles. What I remember is that they are working at a pace, their, their proposed pace of work is they're going to complete 2,500 feet per month.
Can I propose that we just say there's a plan?
So about a half mile a month.
It's not that important.
Let's get the eight miles.
So can I just propose that, line 101, marsh, comma, there is a plan, period.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
This is like Tisha.
Gwen and I remember doing them, somehow we tabled them, but anyway, it doesn't matter.
Okay.
So we have a, do we have to, because we motioned, and I seconded for discussion, and now I've amended it, do we have to do anything different?
Yeah, the motion should read as amended. Who made the motion?
I made the motion, and I'll change the motion to approve the minutes for May 11th as amended.
And I will second.
And you'll second Nancy, thank you.
All right, excuse me.
Yes?
116, please.
Oh, 16? The vote was taken, all were in favor, and the motion passed 5 to 0.
Why wasn't 7 to 0 when there were seven people? But that's okay, don't worry about it.
Wow.
One.
Well, 5 plus 0, 0.
Six.
Maybe you never heard her.
Two people didn't vote, I don't know.
The other things were 7 to 0, and 7 to 0, and 7 to 0 that day, all of a sudden, two people didn't vote 2 to 0.
You were a sharp guy there.
I will amend.
I have to admit, sometimes I don't vote, I just...
I will draw my second, and we'll just do whatever.
Yeah, make a motion to...
Motion here?
The motion for May 11th as amended twice.
And I will second that.
Okay. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, they can't, all right now, approved, as amended, twice?
May 25.
No, May 25, that's more recent.
Yeah.
And I'm going to be quiet because I wasn't here.
Ah.
I also was not here, but...
You didn't watch us?
No.
Um, I'll just say on line, I'm just noticing an error, because under the May 11th minutes, it says, Ms. Belander motion to table approval of the April 11th minutes. I think it was supposed to be May 11.
Where was I?
Line 33.
Come on, dude.
Yes.
Yeah, uh, May 11th, yeah, oh, we're taken.
Which minutes are we on, the 25th?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, oh. Okay, so we did April 13th and May 11th, okay.
Yes.
All right, May, correct.
I'll move to accept the May 25th, 2023, meeting minutes as amended.
Second.
Are we amending the amendment here?
No, one.
No, the date.
This is why we don't have the public present.
Yes, thank goodness. Right, so it's line 33.
Yeah.
Line 33.
Says April, and it should say May.
Yeah, it should say May 11th, instead, it says April, change April to May, right?
That's right.
Yep. And then five, there's only five people.
There we go, yep.
Yeah, mine is subdivision, I think I did nothing.
Did everyone vote to return that?
Yep.
Okay, anything, any other comments?
Did you move to amend, move to approve those?
I moved it, Gwen seconded it, we just haven't...
Did you move as to, as amended?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. All right.
That's what I'm saying, because I wasn't here.
I understand that.
Thank you.
No, one abstention. I haven't had call for the vote yet.
Shut your hat. All right.
We can't do.
Okay, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Stay.
I abstained.
I have two abstentions, okay.
So it's four.
Aha. Motion passes.
All right.
Okay, Dave, any master plan discussion?
Not this evening.
Land use regulations review.
Uh, there's one thing that I put in your packet, is that did everyone get the memorandum dated June first?
Yes.
From Kristen Murphy to myself.
Oh, yeah.
Um, it's, this was a, kind of, we looked at it, and someone submitted a conditional use permit,
I wondered that.
uh, recently, and asked for a waiver from the planning board and a, and a, and a conditional use permit from the ConCon. Remember, we had like this duplicative process? So we, we talked as a board to streamline it, and we went to the, we, we had two sets of criteria that conflicted with each other. They were different, so they needed to be consistent, because it was like, you know, it's, which one is which? So we, we went forward with a zoning amendment to clarify it, to fix it, and then we teed up, uh, the site, to revise the site plan and subdivision racks in accordance with this memo right here, and COVID hit. And then all, well, we know what happened. And then it kind of just, everyone kind of thought, we did it. It was done, but it never was. So I just wanted to let you know, this is back on the table. I'm gonna have a public hearing, you know, in the near future, uh, so we can correct it. So, and the board has been acting that way because it's kind of a matter of course and review. It's like, it makes sense, like, because, you know, the stricter shell control, like, okay, we, we're setting on these. You don't have to follow both sets of different criteria. You just set one set of criteria. So we've been doing it this way, but it's more housekeeping that we should formally adopt it in our site plan regulations. So I'll post a public hearing, and we can discuss it, and Kristen Murphy will come and, you know, have, be able to answer any questions, as well as myself.
Okay.
All right?
Yep. Don't lose it this time.
Performance guarantees, we did release, uh, in its entirety, Ray Farm. Ray Farm, that subdivision.
Really?
Site plan, uh, site plan is done.
Oh, what was, what was that again?
Ray Farm?
Yeah.
Yep. Uh, Willie Creek.
Yeah, 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 but what was the, what was the, I missed the whole thing that you just said.
Oh, we, we released the letter of credit.
Oh, oh, okay.